Call to order, City Commission meeting of Tuesday, November 6th, 2018. Let the record show, we are missing one commissioner, Ms. Walla. First item up is the Order of Business. Mrs. Carlson, are there any changes to the Order of Business?
Thank you, President Decker, members of the commission. There is a couple of changes. Under the consent agenda, number C, the contract, that will not be approved tonight. It will be removed. And then, under the timetable, we are just switching it around a little bit. At 4:35, we will have the traffic concern. And then, we will then continue at 4:45 with the Badlands. And then, 5:10 for the third public hearing. And then, 5:25 would be the abatement hearing. And that would be all my changes.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Carlson. Any questions for Mrs. Carlson on the changes to the agenda? Look for a motion on the Order of Business with amendments.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as changed.
We have a motion to approve the Order of Business as changed. Any further questions or comments for staff? Not all in favor of the amended Order of Business, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. The consent agenda, are there any items on the consent agenda that commissioners wish Now, I'd look for a motion on the consent agenda. Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve with a second. Any further questions or comments? I will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries on the consent agenda. You have some timetable items, one starting at 4:35. I will start with the administrative and finance proclamation. Small business Saturday proclamation. "The City of Dickinson, North Dakota, this proclamation is, whereas the government of Dickinson, North Dakota celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community," according to the United States Small Business Administration. There are currently 30.2 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.7 percent of all businesses, with employees in the United States are responsible for 65.9 percent of net new jobs created from 2000 to 2017. And whereas, small businesses employ 47.5 percent of the employees in the private sector of the United States. And whereas, 90 percent of consumers in the United States say Small Business Saturday has been a positive impact on their community. And whereas, 89 percent of consumers who are aware of Small Business Saturday said that the day encourages them to shop small all year long. And whereas, 73 percent of consumers who reportedly shop small at independently owned retailers and restaurants on Small Business Saturday did so with friends or family. And whereas, the most reported reason for consumers aware of the day to shop and dine at small, independently owned businesses was to support their community, 64 percent. And whereas, Dickinson, North Dakota supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. And whereas, advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now, therefore, I, Scott Decker, President of the City Commission of Dickinson, North Dakota, do hereby proclaim November 24th, 2018, as Small Business Saturday. And urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. And I would look for a motion to approve this proclamation.
Mr. President, I move to approve the proclamation as read.
We have a motion to approve the proclamation as read.
Second.
With a second. All in favor of approving the proclamation, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I hereby sign Small Business Saturday proclamation, designating it November 24th, 2018. If you could pass that down to Mrs. Carlson. All right, we have a 4:35 timetable agenda, and this is a citizen's public concern about traffic. So if Mr. Brady Morell would like to present his concerns.
Thank you, Mr. President. What I have seen back in the past was people do not stop for pedestrians at the crosswalks because they don't see them. So, I don't know if they can get like a light or like get something flashing by the crosswalk so people can see it better. And then, there's also, I've seen there was people like been racing on 9th Street with their motorcycles. And I've also seen there's people like stop like right in the middle of the intersection. So, I don't know if you guys ever heard, do not block the box, it's like a painted X, like right in the intersection. And then, there's been some noise ordinance for like for semis, like using their J-bike closer to town. And then, what I also seen is like people are supposed to use the first lane, but they instead go into the second lane on Villard. So, I don't know if that's, that's all I have for now, and there's one more. Like for school zones, like it should be high down crease, I don't know how that works, but should be down like 215 miles per hour. And then, like on Villard, should be down after by come and go, should be decreased down to 25 all the way down, or 30, what do you guys think? That's all I have for now.
All right, thank you, Mr. Morell. I have written down all your concerns, and I will pass them along to Chief Dossinger and his staff. Any questions from commissioners for Mr. Morell?
No.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you.
All right, we will proceed now, our next item is at 4:45. So we will proceed into Item B on the non timetable. Beer only liquor license. Deputy City Administrator Carlson.
Thank you, President Decker and commissioners. This is a liquor license application, the Grand Buffet, formerly as the King Buffet, and they are applying for a beer only liquor license. The type of license is unlimited in issuance. The owner has, the owners have passed the background check and appropriate fees are paid, and staff recommends approval.
Okay, any questions for Mrs. Carlson? And this is basically because of the transfer of ownership. Any other questions, comments on the beer only liquor license for Grand Buffet?
Mr. President, I would move to approve the beer only liquor license for Grand Buffet.
I have a motion to approve with a second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, will vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Next item up is the Vite arbitration, and City Attorney Murtha.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the commission, attached for your review is a representation agreement with Seth Thompson from the Vogel firm for representation of the city in the Vite arbitration. The only, the only thing I would note is apparently the one that is included in your packet wasn't updated with the signature line, but the firm has filed an updated one with the correct signature line indicating that. So, I'm requesting your approval.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Murtha. Any questions for Mrs. Murtha on the Vite agreement?
Mr. President, I move we approve the representation agreement.
We have a motion to approve the agreement?
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion or questions for Mrs. Murtha? I will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries on representation agreement. Mrs. Dominick? This is a report on hiring, our Hiring Journal.
Good evening, Mr. President, commissioners. At this time, I can say we do not have a police officer opening, so those have all been filled for now. We had a corporal police officer position in internal opening, and that has been filled with Michael Hanson. We have a street and fleet operations manager, we did some interviews on that position and have decided at this time to hold off with hiring, that no offer was made. Street operator, we still have one position open, we do not have it listed at this time, but we'll be working on that in the next couple of weeks. We have a fleet services assistant position open, interviews will take place tomorrow for that position. Water utility, we have one opening, actually, I guess that one has been just filled. So, the water utility operator position is filled, but we have a wastewater treatment plant operator that will be opening in the next couple of weeks. Solid waste route operator, we did just have interviews on that. No offer's been made yet. Firefighter, we just recently had an opening for a firefighter position, and we went off a prior roster and did make an offer, and that position has been filled. And then, we have several other positions that are open right now. Property appraiser will be opened in the next couple of weeks. Clerk of court position, we did interviews today, that was only internally only, so those interviews just are actually yesterday those interviews happened. And then, we have in the water department, a water utility manager and a chief water utility operator position that are unfilled at this time. Any questions on any of that?
Any questions for Mrs. Dominick on the Hiring Journal?
Thank you.
We have a few minutes here. We have nothing from any of, from public safety, engineering, public works, or planning. Mrs. Murtha, can we start on the building code enforcement, the fact, the findings in fact?
Absolutely. Mr. President, members of the commission, we've been provided a copy of the findings in fact and order related to the proposed demolition of 523 Dupont. This is essentially similar to a 15 minutes. So, the intent of the making findings and an order is required by city code, and the intent is to document what was heard and the evidence received at the previous public hearing on October 9th, and then your motion and order again pursuant to city code. So, if it meets with your approval, I did draft it, and building officials reviewed it and has no concerns. It does reflect what transpired that day, and we would ask for your approval of the findings.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Murtha. Any questions for Mrs. Murtha on the findings in fact? Hearing no questions, I'd look for a motion to consider to approve the findings and facts of order for demolition of 523 Dupont Street.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve with a second. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries on the findings of fact approval. The 4:45 timetable, and that is Badlands Crime Stoppers and a presentation from Chief Dossinger and Detective Clouser.
Hi, good evening, Mr. President, members of the commission. The Dickinson Police Department is very excited to be launching our Badlands Crime Stopper program. Tonight, Investigative Sergeant Kylan Clouser is going to provide you with some information about the program, where it's going, and we're very excited to have some excellent people on the board to help us get this program rolled out in our community. At this time, I'd like to invite Detective Sergeant Clouser to come up to the podium and talk about it.
Good evening, commission, President. Thank you, guys, for having me here in front of you again. And so, as Chief Dossinger just kind of alluded to there, Badlands Crime Stoppers is backing up and running. And for some of you guys that have been here a long time, lifelong members, you guys probably hopefully can remember this, it was something that began decades ago here in Dickinson. I can't cite you the original board, but I know that Mr. Ebeltoft and some other members in the community were really influential in getting this thing going. Incorporated in 1985, it's a 501(c)(3) organization, and so, it's been in hibernation for a little bit as the board was dissolved, and as the community continued to reach out to us about, with information, they wanted to provide the Badlands Crime Stoppers and additionally questions on what was the current status. Chief Dossinger had made it a priority to get this thing back rolling, and so, as he also said, that we've, we're able to reach out to one particular citizen who has been really instrumental in getting the resurrection back and helping us get this board back together, moving in the right direction. I'm going to introduce, and there's three of them here tonight, board members, that is, that I'll introduce here in just a second, and give them a second to introduce, you know, say a few words if they'd like to. But so you guys understand, like Badlands Crime Stoppers, how's it going to work for us here in the community? You guys know, it's, its stress point is anonymity for citizens, and it provides monetary compensation in instances where this board is going to find that that is just. And so, what we've done is, we've set up a couple, we have a landline, we have a cell number with a text, and we have an email address, and then we have on our Dickinson Police Department webpage, a tip line specifically that you can submit your information in, and it'll pop into Badlands Crime Stoppers. So, a number of these different things that are a little bit different than when it was originally intact and moving forward as time and technology has progressed here. So, what, we've had this thing back, so I've been, I've done seven different interviews since it's, since we've got everything kind of up and going, and a couple TV, you know, channels have been here, some radio things, but in a week and a half time span, we've already had five tips that have hit, to different degrees and variety. There's been some theft, there's been some narcotic stuff that's come forward, and we will see whether the board deems that these things are just for, you know, the purpose of their mission as it goes forward. But the, a big one we had was the bomb threat that McDonald's had here recently, the false one. Had some information come through that was, it was key. I mean, it was, it was, it was, so, five in just a week and a half, I'm really excited to say that number because I think it's a really, really positive thing on our community already and how this is, the word's out there. We're going to continue to get it out there and continue to try to market it, and anybody here that has any resources or anything that they think could help us, we ask for any help from anybody on that. So, I guess without further ado, I want to take a second here to introduce the board members that are present with us tonight, three of them sitting back here with us. But our president of Badlands Crime Stoppers, Dean Rumel, we have Rob Larson and Brian Ryder as well. So, if those guys could step up here maybe and say, just the board can see their faces, and then if Mr. Rumel, if you'd like to say a few words for us, that would be great.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and commissioners. We're delighted to be serving on the board for Badlands Crime Stoppers. We think this is a great opportunity, where the community, our citizens, and of course, our outstanding law enforcement here in this community can work together and solve some crimes. So, on behalf of the board, we're just delighted and would ask for support in the community. Again, this is a volunteer board. We do have some resources, which we're just delighted that was left over from the past, and we've also garnered some additional funds, and so, we're set to go here. We're really excited about these next steps. But you have some really good people that have Detective Clouser and Chief Dossinger who are supporting Badlands Crime Stoppers, and we really thank you for that commitment that they have made to that program. So, if you had any questions for us, we'd certainly entertain any of those, but again, we thank you for your support.
Any questions for Mr. Rumel?
Mr. President, Mr. Rumel, there were certain points of how you're going to educate the public in these here crimes. I didn't hear anything about Channel 19, which is totally available to you guys. I'd recommend Crime of the Week specifics on Channel 19, if you want to put it on there for one week, two weeks, or as long as you think it needs to be exposed on there, I think it can be a real valuable tool for you guys to use. A lot of people watch it, I, I'm sure it's because of the city commission, they like watching the channel.
Commissioner Steiner, we really appreciate the idea, that's a great idea. I know Detective Clouser has got quite a few, he is reinstating the Crime of the Week, so he is going to do that. I know the radio stations have donated some spots sometimes, and so, we have the media that's really working with us, which, again, we're delighted to see the media working with us, but we have not talked about Channel 19, so we will put that on our agenda, and we appreciate that idea. And any other ideas that you would have for us, we'd be more than happy to entertain.
Thank you. All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next timetable agenda is not till 5:10, so we'll move on to, to public issues of city concern, not on the agenda. If there is anyone in the public that has any concerns, not on our agenda, please come forward, state your name, and let us know of your concern, or public issue within the Seeing no one has a concern or a public issue, I'll close the part of the agenda, and I will move on to commission items. We have a town square appraisal, and that will be presented by Deputy City Administrator Carlson.
Thank you, President Decker and commissioners. In your packet, there is a memo from Mr. Hadley, who worked on getting some appraisers, according to the commissioners from last time, we got a list of three, and two of them were retired at the time, and so, we did get a third one. Mr. Ibach has presented what he could do for us as far as appraising for the site A Town Square, and it's approximately between $12,000 to $15,000, and he could get it done this year if we would approve the contract. So, upon that, we are asking that, an approval of going with the Mr. Ibach's quote, and then to also offset that as when the contract is approved upon the attorney's review, that it can be signed and go for it, so we can get that done. Would obtain any questions, I hope I can answer, that, on this.
Part of this agreement, if my understanding is, there would be a cost share with the building owners. Am I correct?
Go ahead. Mr. President, from my understanding with speaking to Mr. Hadley, the property owners are only willing to pay part of the appraisal cost if the city decides to move forward with the purchasing of property.
If we eventually purchase.
But they are all on board with this appraiser, and they're going to give him access? There's not going to be any issues?
No, there was not going to be any issues. Mr. Hadley did inform them, who we had picked, and they were all very good with that, and I think that the reputation of Mr. Ibach is highly recommended from everybody, so I think it would be, and Commissioner Trustum has stated exactly what I had understood too, that upon, if we do purchase the buildings, then they would look at the 70/30.
Any other questions for Mrs. Carlson on this consideration for, to approve the appraiser?
Just where would, out of the budget, where does this money come from?
This would probably have to come out of the contingency money. Because it was not budgeted.
I, I don't like the price, 12,000 to 15,000, you know, I would, I would be okay with not to exceed 12,000. The other part I don't like is that they aren't going to share in the expense right off the bat. If we pay the 12,000, it doesn't go through, we're stuck with the 12,000. You know, it's another cost that we aren't going to have at Site B. And so, I think it would be in their best interest to share this with us. We're trying to get this done for both parties. And, you know, with what's happening, it's making it easier for me to just say, what is wrong with that Site B that it costs us $0,000 right now compared to, you know, close to 300,000, 400,000, 500,000 with this construction and destruction and so on at Site A? So, that's my, that's my feeling, I don't want to go more than 12,000, I'd like to see them participate.
Is there any way, Mrs. Carlson, that we could get a, I know he's got an estimate of approximately 12,000 to 15,000. And I don't know, Mr. Frederick, would, do you think, or Mrs. Carlson, do you think that we could lock him in at 12,000 for the appraisals?
The price is the going rate.
Pricing is what?
The price is the going rate. What he's out, I mean, that's what the property appraiser is going to charge for that kind of a job, so.
And I also agree, I did, when I saw the email that came back from Mr. Ibach, it does say 12,500 to 15,000 in his email that he quoted us, and when I checked into it to see what the market is, and on three properties, he's, even at 15, it's 5,000 apiece on the three properties, and that was the going rate, where it could go up to 7,500 per property was the going rate. So, I, I understand it is a cost, but I'm wondering if this is a point where we need to do the cost for business to find out, is this what we need? And if the appraisal doesn't come back to what we need to do, then I think it's up to the task force to be able to decide, where do we go with this?
Mr. Ibach's, Ibach's from Bismarck, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and the other two are here in Dickinson, but they're retired.
I'm not sure where they were from, but I know that they are retired, and they were asked if they had any consensus of anybody else that does commercial, there's just not a lot of commercial.
Mr. Geisler was this one from Dickinson.
Geisler was one I was.
He doesn't do many.
He's in Arizona.
He retired, and I think one was.
One was Miller, and one was.
I know we got appraisers, but are any of them commercial?
It was a Knutson on a Bismarck, on a Mandan, but he's retired also, no.
Right.
It'd be Marty's brother, but he's a commercial appraiser.
Yeah, that's, that's the problem, residential versus commercial.
No, I mean, there's plenty of residential appraisers, there's not a lot of commercial appraisers, so.
Well, my experience, and I'm sure it's been your guys' experience also here, is that anytime we have a, an approximate 12,000 to 15,000, an approximate 100,000 to 125,000, where do we end up? We end up on the high side. So, I mean, I've never seen one come in on the bottom. In 20 years, I've never, never seen one come in on the bottom. So, if we can set a price and say, can you get it done for this, let's do it. Let's see if we can get her done for 12,000. All I can say is no when we cross that bridge and we come to it.
We can definitely ask and get the contract, I know Mr. Hadley is working on that side of it. We can definitely ask, and then, if it's not, we'll bring it forward. If it is, then. then do you want to approve it at that? We can make it that contingency.
And at this point, I'm willing to step back from making them pay it, the other party's become involved at this point in time. Well, I'm hoping that it'll be an appraisal that we can live with, and then they'll cost share that at the end.
I think we could go back to Mr. Ibach and just say, the $12,500 or whatever his low end is, is where we can, we need to be. If he says that it can't be done, then I guess we have to talk about it again.
If he can't do it at that price, I think we can sit down and ballpark it amongst the business people here and get a pretty good idea what that's worth.
The purpose of it, though, is to have a number that is something we can use in negotiations. We know we can ballpark it, but we want to have some documentation back us up, too, so...
I just would have felt better, I will feel better, when somebody's gone through those buildings and tell us actually what they're worth, you know?
That's where I was...
So, if you can, we'll, I'd look for a motion to table this on the consideration that you're going to approach Mr. Ibach to get a locked-down hard figure.
Of $12,000.
$12,000 or $12,500, you know, and then we need to have the... I guess we'll have to have that discussion about the cost share again on the next meeting.
He said it just had to be this month to get it done by the end of the year?
Yes.
So, if we talk about it this next meeting, we should still be okay?
Yes.
I mean, I'd like to get these numbers in, so we can talk about it.
He was willing to send a contract right away to get this going right away, but Mr. Hadley is gone at this time, so we can definitely get it within November 20.
I understand we want to get this going. I think the end is that we want to see that sometime in March or April, that we can hand this over, and it can be running, and they can get going what they need to do for the summit.
Right.
Okay, so I would look for a motion to table this.
I would make that motion, Mr. President.
A motion to table this Town Square appraisal contract until our next meeting?
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing nonwill vote, Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Trustam?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Table contract with the appraiser. Our next timetable item is 5:10, which is a public hearing. We also have an abatement hearing at 5:25. We have about seven minutes, and I don't feel like going into executive session now. We'll save that for the end. So, being that the abatement hearing is...
I'm ready when you order the mayor.
I think...
You got seven minutes.
Mobile homes first.
Right, but that is, we have that scheduled at 5:10, and I don't know if, you know, being at, being 5:10, if we're scheduled for that, can we bump it up without... Because it was advertised as 5:10.
You have the discretion, however, the downside of...
If somebody...
If somebody was relying on 5:10, they may just be arriving.
Well, I guess we'll have that...
Take a recess for five minutes.
I guess we can, we can have a recess for five minutes. Short break for five minutes, and then we will reconvene at 5:10 for the public hearing on the Mobile House. So, I'd look for a motion to adjourn for five minutes.
So, move.
Second.
We adjourn for five minutes.
Call City Commission meeting back to order. We have a 5:10 public hearing, Mobile Home Ordinance. It will be handled by City Attorney Murtha.
Thank you. Mr. President, members of the Commission, before you is an updated draft, the Mobile Home Licensing Ordinance. We're shortening it to Mobile Home, it's actually Mobile Home and Campground Licensing Ordinance. At the last public hearing, the Commission heard several comments from Mobile Home Park owners, and as a result of that public hearing, directed that a committee be formed with several staff members, as well as Commissioners Walla and Frederick, and the park owners, many of whom attended. It was a voluntary participation on their part, but attended. The committee met twice, had very fruitful discussion. A lot of the owners were very vocal and participated in expressing their concerns. As a result of those discussions and those people who provided input, this draft was created. Subsequent to the draft being circulated amongst the committee members, many park owners then provided additional comments in the form of follow-up emails or calls. And as a result of those additional comments that were received, the draft before you continues to evolve, and I will turn it over to Building Official Schwent to discuss some of the particulars. One of the comments that was received mentioned the fact that there still needed to be alphabetical ordering of the definitions section, as well as consistency because of the terminology that was changed. And so, I won't highlight those particular areas, other than to note that when the ordinance is in final form, that will be updated. Otherwise, I'll turn it over to Mr. Schwent.
Thank you, Attorney Murtha. President Decker, Commissioners, as Attorney Murtha stated, we did meet September 26th and October 26th with the majority of the owners of the Mobile Home District Campground RV Park. The only thing, we met on Monday with Commissioner Frederick to remove one of the tie-downs for RVs. It was brought, a speaker was brought into one of the meetings and recommended that tie-downs be put on RVs, and research done by the owners have stated their concerns to us, it's problematic. It creates more damage than what's... And we agreed in a meeting Monday that we would remove that from the ordinance. That's all I have right now.
That's all. Any questions for Mr. Schwent, or I guess Commissioner Frederick, on the code?
I guess I do have one additional comment. I apologize for that. Our code is a working tool. There are some duplications throughout the code, and we're working through it. So, some of the similarities, such as addressing properties, if you look in the building code, if you look in the fire code, if you look in our municipal code, they're, the I codes are the same, but our municipal code is different as far as addressing properties. We would actually use what the fire code and the building code as far as addressing. So, there are some things that we do need to clean up, but we're in that process. Thank you.
Any questions, Commissioners?
Mr. President, are we going to have, be able to hear from spokesman from the Mobile Home Group?
It's a public hearing, yes. I guess I just have a couple of comments, and I don't know if they're really... I guess it is a question. The pet record, why is that in here?
I can offer that response to that, Mr. President. With regards to the pet record, that actually came through as a result of discussions with law enforcement. There is a fairly very large issue with pets for animals that are unclaimed as pets. And so, when animal control is attempting to follow up, find owners, that type of thing, it's very helpful if within the parks where there can be numerous animals, in order to locate owners or follow up on various complaints, to have that kind of record. So, it was brought to the committee as a police department animal control request, and at the time, there was no objection during the discussion.
I guess my question is, is it more problematic in a mobile home park than in a residential neighborhood?
I would turn to Chief Dastner.
I would think that it would fall underneath the city's pet licensing and so on, that they have a dog, it should be licensed with the city.
Ideally.
Shouldn't be any difference for Mobile Home Court.
I guess you asked if it's more problematic in some of the trailer courts. The answer is yes. We do have some, a huge feral cat population that we're trying to get control of, and the pet licensing, like you says, yes, that works if people actually license their pets. But we felt that this would be a way to help us deal with the problem, and I don't think there was any objection.
Not at this time of the committee.
Okay. We'll see if we hear anything. And then, I guess, reading through the, one of the concerns from one of the property owners, I did contact Commissioner Frederick about the markings. I guess when I was reading this, my understanding was that there would be boundary markings, and he clarified that it would just be an identification marker per lot.
Per structure.
So, numbers on the actual trailer house, or mobile home, or manufactured home don't count?
Yes. We would actually, if there's a structure there, it'd have an address on it.
Okay. I guess, like I said, the property owner's concern was that there would be an actual physical marker on the lot, their understanding. So, is that yes or no?
Our code actually says it has to be on a structure. That's why...
So, as long as it's on the home?
On an empty lot, it really, it really doesn't...
It doesn't matter, right?
The definition of question is probably 21 dot 40 dot 050, number A. The limits of each lot must be marked clearly defined on the ground. The lot limits must be the same as shown on the accepted plans. All lots must be placed in compliance with applicable flood plan requirements. So, I think that's where they're... What does that mean?
Well, when you're actually developing a mobile home park, you actually have to maintain your setbacks. That's what that would apply to, when you're actually setting up a park. If you're adding onto a structure, onto a mobile home, we need to know what those setbacks are from, whether it's imaginary line or a drawn line.
So, when they're setting a new mobile home, we need to know the boundaries of the lot?
Correct.
They don't have to be marked all the time?
Correct. They'd have to find them, just like you would in any other lot in town.
Okay, so, it's no different than if you're building on...
A new, a house on a regular lot.
Correct.
You have to locate the boundaries.
Find the rebar that's in the ground.
Correct.
Yep.
Any other questions for Mr. Schwent or Mrs. Murtha? Hearing that there are no other questions, I will open up the public hearing. If anybody has any comments on the Mobile Home Ordinance, please come forward, state your name and your concern.
Good evening, Board members and so on and so forth, and President. But I'm Randy Almer, and me and my wife own an RV park out behind Red Rock Ford along the interstate back in there, and that park was probably structured back in the 70s, mid 70s. And back then, the biggest trailer house probably was a 65 footer, and it was probably 12 foot wide. With the mobile homes and stuff that are now, double wides and so on and so forth, the way that trailer park was laid out, I had to change. So, now, according to this pinning part, where you have to have all the markings and so on and so forth, I'm going to have to invest and have it surveyed and laid out again. So, that's going to be an expense to me, you know? And then, the other part that I'm concerned about is the 270 days that we talked about at committee meetings that I attended and so on and so forth. To me, I think that should be revised to that if it meets the all-weather standard, which is that sub-zero, that they should be able to stay 365 days a year. That we shouldn't discriminate against them if they have the proper coated RV for our zone, to limit them to 270 days. To me, when that was all talked about, at that point, they were talking that it had to be identified as a Four Seasons or a Zone Six, which then when we were clarified that these trailer houses are RVs and mobile homes and so on and so forth, are a zero, are rated at a zero with an enclosed factory belly and so on and so forth. And these RVs, according to my understanding, everybody I've talked to, and all the manufacturers and so forth, if they are insulated properly and skirted, these RVs that are built nowadays are no different than the trailer houses that were built in the 60s and 70s, as far as R values. So, to me, that taking these trailer houses and RVs and so on and so forth into consideration, there shouldn't be any difference. An RV that's rated for zero, a trailer house that's rated for zero, if they're skirted and heated properly with heat tapes and so on and so forth. I'm not talking about putting extra heaters and so on and so forth underneath them, just by skirting them and insulating them and putting heat tapes on, just like you would on a trailer house. And then, the tie-down part, which I'm glad it's gone now, because the manufacturers of the RVs say there's no proper way that they can give you to tie them, things down. And then, every time we'd have one coming and going after 35 or 40 days, or 45 days, you would have to call one call, have them come in, locate before you could put an anchor in the ground. Every time, you'd have to... Because one set of anchors ain't going to match every trailer or RV that you're pulling in and out of there. So, to me, that would be a burden on us, as RV, mobile homeowners, to have to pay that cost of one call and so on and so forth, and having that removal and put back in the ground, and the expense and so on and so forth. So, through this whole thing, I believe that we need to probably sit back and look at some of this again before we move forward, now that we can understand the research that needs to go into some of this stuff with RVs.
Mr. Almer?
Yeah.
We had two meetings, and we all left in agreeance after the last one to these rules. I mean, the 270 days was agreed to in the first meeting. We do not want campers and trailers to be permanent residences. They are not permanent residences. They're mobile vehicles. They're needed to come in and out. We all agreed on this. We had two meetings. The second thing is, we've already given up on the, we don't have to, the anchoring part of it. We've already discussed that it's not in there anymore. So, that's not going to change. But the 270 days, I can assure you that there's not going to be anyone from staff that's going to support anything that makes a camper trailer a permanent residence in Dickinson. I sure won't support it. And I mean, the reason we had these meetings and you guys all agreed, in fact, at the last meeting, I went around the room twice, and I said, are we all okay with everything? You guys all looked at me and said, yes, we're good. You guys, you guys brought Mr. Shopper in, and he's the one that brought up the anchoring, not us.
I didn't bring him in. I didn't.
Well, I mean, somebody from your group, somebody from that group did, so...
I understand that, yeah. But my also, my understanding is, too, is that if we're going to lose them for the December, January, February, March, that's four months of income.
We're not saying they can't stay here in the wintertime. They can come in January if they have the right trailer and stay for 270 days. They just can't stay for 365 and never leave. I don't care when the 270 starts, as long as they have the right trailer to live here in those winter months.
I guess then I have no more, nothing other than that, because that was my main concern, is that the 270 days, to me, was like that it had to end in December if their camper didn't meet. They had to be gone at that time.
Am I wrong? The 270 didn't matter, as long as they had the right vehicle to live in.
Correct.
Correct. Okay, then I was misunderstanding, and I'm sorry.
Yeah, no problem.
Yeah. It's clarified, I guess, but to me, I just, you know, as a RV, mobile home owner of a campground and so on and so forth, that I believe that when this first all started coming out with the state having the jurisdiction over everything, we didn't have a problem with them staying, and now, all of a sudden, everything is returning around. And these people, when they came here before Dickinson had all these apartments and everything else, most of them, construction people, came in RVs.
And we under...
And state didn't have that problem.
And we understand that. We... And we, and we worked with them. But the, the city is not, ever once said that this is the way we want it. I mean, we have enough housing now available. At that time, we didn't. And if that ever happened again, we would probably make exceptions to the rule again, to, to make it work. But we have available housing now.
Right.
But, but what happened was, the state did have the, the right to issue your, your license?
Correct.
There was no oversight?
They came once a year. The state came and inspected my RV trailer park.
Well.
Once a year.
They may have done years, but there are some in town that they did not.
I got records every year they came, so.
And, and we're, we're trying to make the living conditions for everybody, um, safe in town.
And I agree. We need to do something, but to me, to punish these people, because that's their home, is wrong. And that's in my eyes, of what I've seen with these people that are living in RVs. They don't wanna live in apartment buildings. I've lost one that's been with me for two and a half years, because of this rule. He took, picked up and went to Fairfield, because he didn't wanna deal with all this, the tie-downs and all that stuff. And to me, that was like, you know, discriminated against him, because his trailer park, or his trailer house is not, or his RV is not meeting our standards, which is fine. It is what it is, I guess, and I guess I'll have to deal with it.
I mean, the hotel and apartment owners could come and say, "We're discriminating against them, because we're allowing these people not to stay in a hotel, to stay in their camper trailer, and not stay in a hotel, or rent an apartment." We can look at it from every different direction. There, there just has to be a set of rules. I mean, I, I think 270 days has been more than fair. I mean, at one time, we were talking less than that, six months maybe, I think we were talking.
In that construction season?
Yeah, that's the 270.
Yeah. Okay.
No.
Anything else?
Nope.
All right. Anyone? Yep, thank you. Anyone else wants to come forward, has any issues?
Mr. Speaker, Commissioner, my name is Brian Wadsworth, and I'm with Heartland Village. And I don't have any issues, other than from the letter that I wrote, so I just wanna thank you for reading that letter, and if you've got any comments or questions for me on that letter. I just hope you consider the many points that I brought up, and.
I do appreciate the information that you are providing, and Heartland Village is providing, because there's been a lot of questions regarding Heartland and so on. So it's good to see what you guys are doing, and what you're intending on doing, and so on. So I appreciate that. I think it's alleviated a lot of the questions that I had, and a lot of questions that people have asked me.
That's right.
So, thank you for corresponding.
Okay. Well, if there's another committee meeting, I'm more than happy to travel and be here for it, and I hope there's more discussion, and before there's a final passage.
Well, this is the first public hearing, though, well, actually, this is the third, but this is the first reading. Oh, this is.
Actually, uh.
I guess.
So I, Linda, I think can confirm, but the very first presentation, it was approved, so we only need one more reading for final passage.
And this would be the reading for the final?
No, it would be at the next meeting on November 20th. We specifically did not have it on for.
As, as, okay. So are you planning to have any more committee meetings, Mr. Frederick?
No.
Okay.
We were not, because at the last one, we had, we were all in agreement, with everybody that had, had attended, so. We had not planned any additional meetings.
And you were provided the letter that we were provided?
I was.
Okay. The, the concerns, but I guess some of the language is probably, is what they were more concerned with, right? So, we've all read it, and, and I'm, I'm sure Mrs. Murtha is comfortable with her, her language in the ordinance as is right now, so.
Well, and again, as I, I think I, I think one of the concerns was just optimizing definitions, making sure terms are capitalized, and that will all be done for the final draft.
Okay.
However, if there were any additional concerns that you wanted to specifically discuss, I am available right now during the public hearing to discuss those.
I itemized my concerns in the letter, so it's more of back to you, if you've got questions that you'd like to discuss with me, but, I mean, my points are clear, and request that you honor, honor them or consider them.
All information that's been provided, it will be considered with the.
Okay. All right.
Good.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any concerns on the mobile home ordinance? Please come forward, state your name.
I'm playing with Sunrest, Suncrest Trailer Court. The only thing I was in question of, I guess, when our meetings, we were all in agreement to, at the 270 days, the all-season living. I thought we all agreed, if they were all-season, that they could stay. That's how I understood it.
Mr. Frederick.
And then they would have to have an insulated belly on the RVs.
That is not.
That's what we all agreed on, at the meeting, I thought, but.
I, I wouldn't agree with, I would agree with Mr. Frederick, that the 270 days was the max date, and if it was during the, the cold months, that the, the RV would have to meet the, the, the standard for our area.
I misunderstood that, because when I asked it at the meeting, we agreed on it, but maybe I misunderstood.
But our intention, just like Mr. Frederick said, that we don't, this is a year, they're not gonna be a year-round dwelling. They're not.
The reason I'm saying is, there's times when guys, you know, welders and whatnot that we have there, that come from the refineries, or do whatever, and it takes a year and a half to build the refinery, or two years. 270 days, they're not gonna finish the project, so I don't know how, you know, that's my concern. I'm not saying for 10 years, I'm just saying, you know, to finish a refinery project, or a pipeline, or something on that.
Are these your travel trailers, or are they?
No, they're, they're not. They're ones, you know, like, they'll be over in Sidney, Montana for a year, or Watford, or wherever, and then they'll move into Dickinson, they'll do a project like the refinery, and then they move on. You know, they have, that's their home. You know, I guess that's my question, because sometimes 270 days, they're not gonna be done with that project.
Now, you and I had talked, if he comes over, and he wants to live in it during the winter months, and I wasn't in the committee meetings, but if they skirt it, insulate it and so on, does that then take it out of that 270? It does not. If it's a travel trailer, it's a travel trailer, is a travel trailer, and that's.
It's a mobile home, it's different, yes.
Right. Okay.
Technically, you're considered homeless if you do live in those structures. They're counted as homeless in the community if they do live in those travel vehicles.
Generally, they have a home back wherever they're, they're from.
Right.
But they come up here, and, you know, they, they work for a year and a half on a project, the trailer will stay there. They'll go back and forth to their, their home. You know, once a month, they'll fly home and come back. But I'm just saying, we've had them there for a couple of years, and, you know, where they do a project.
They can currently claim it as a permanent residence, though. Is that correct?
I don't know how they do that. That's where they're staying, as long as they're here doing this project, yes.
Mr. Frederick, Commissioner Frederick, is there anything you see that they could do to bump that level up to where it would qualify, over the 270, if they prepare the travel trailer court?
I mean, just stay here in the wintertime, they have to have a trailer that meets that zero, they have to have a, they have to have a camper trailer that meets that standard that can be lived in in the winter. So we're already requiring that. I, I don't know how you.
So how do, how do they do that?
I mean, we're trying to say we're gonna make a fifth wheel, a permanent residence, and that.
Can they do something to the fifth wheel to bring that up to?
I mean, it's, it's permanent here. If we don't.
If they're here for two years working, they're not gonna work for, do half the project, and then.
But I mean, there's some guys, there's some guys that have probably been living in them for six or plus years, five or six years.
I don't have any, but.
Yeah, that's not temporary.
That's not temporary.
But there, there are some.
You know where I'm going with the project, if they're here doing a, the refinery, or something like that, if they're building something, they're not gonna wanna stay for 270 days, and then move to another town. Where, as far as I understand, we're the only town or city that's doing anything like this. I mean, you can go to South Dakota, you can leave that camper, sit there as long as you pay rent, and it's not.
So what you're saying is, we're leading the industry?
I guess. I don't think it's good, but I guess that's how we decide to do it. But, that's my point, is, like I said, these guys are building something, and, and they're not gonna get an apartment. They're gonna go, you know, they, do you have campgrounds in Manning, or Southard? Them people are gonna go to the smaller towns, and we're gonna lose their, you know, they're buying their gas and their restaurant, you know, they're in Dickinson. But, that's all I have. I appreciate it.
Thanks. Any questions for Mr. Kleinwalker?
Mr. Frederick, in the discussion with the committee, why was there a push for the, to establish the amount of days?
I think that was staff.
It's a staff recommendation, a permanent structure, 180 days is temporary, and we actually raised it to the 270. We, we do not want RVs being permanent structures in the city. They've been problematic, some areas, not all areas have been problematic. They are not a permanent structure. They don't meet the, our wind loads, snow loads. There's no way you can actually show that they do. They could meet our, our temperature, our design temperature, but not, you know, for year-round occupancy, it doesn't meet the minimum requirements of the code.
Anyone else?
I am Ted Broughton. I own a North Park Mobile Home Park here in town. And I was a part of the committee, and as were all the other owners. And I was the guy that actually asked Rod to come, Rick and I asked him, because he's quote-quote an expert on, on RVs, and we thought it'd be good input, especially about the winter rated. And then he was the one that brought up anchoring. We, we didn't have a clue. And, you know, honestly, I've anchored a couple for people, but, you know, to request something and to require it is two different things. I called it Texas, actually Taco, Texas Organization of Campground Owners. And when I asked them about it, they said, "No." I mean, they're right in Tornado Alley. And I said, "Why not?" They said, "Well, if we require them to anchor them, they're gonna think they're safe to stay in, in a storm, and it's actually gonna create problems." So, I wanna thank you, Leonard, because we spoke that you would come forward and say that, because it, in my opinion, that's what would happen. So, having said that, I don't want to offend, but our first committee meeting started with this statement, "You're not gonna like everything you hear here." And I thought was, "Well, how do you know that? Did you read my mind?" And Commissioner Fredericks, I don't know if you know this or not, but you can come across pretty firm. And, and how you came across tonight was nothing as how you came across in that meeting. And it was a committee meeting, and, and you do hold the big sick. And when someone with, with that much clout says something, it, it's really hard for us to dispute it. And to end the meeting, we had to agree, quite frankly. And the only way we can disagree at this point would be in a public hearing, where everybody's hearing it, not just us. And we were intimidated by you, honestly. I, I don't, I don't know if, you know, it comes across that way. I was standing in the back room when you talked to Randy, and if I'd have been up here, I'd have felt intimidated, quite frankly. And it's not a put-down, I'm just, I'm just sharing how I, as a person, felt, and that's how I felt at that meeting. So, a couple things. My understanding was, at that meeting, which is different than your understanding, but I, I think if most of us owners would have felt, if it's winter-rated, it can stay over the winter, 12 months a year, however long they need to. I've been in this business 22 years, and every year, once I started, I'd have somebody stay the winter. It'd be somebody, they got divorced, the house got, went with the wife and the kids, and the guy, he stayed there for a year, maybe a year and a half. I guarantee you, people don't stay there forever, you know? But they will sometimes stay for several years. It's not an ideal situation. Actually, the word "trailer park," which we don't use anymore, because it's almost a dirty word. After World War II, that's what they were. They were pull-behind trailers, you could pull behind your car, and they started going into campgrounds, and people turned them into living quarters, and then it went from that to manufactured housing, and now we have two industries going from that. So, do I think it's ideal? No. Do I agree that people that have bought a substandard, you know, if you go underneath, some of the, the, the tanks are exposed, the water lines are exposed, there's no way that they can make it through the winter, you know, without something stupid like a propane, you know, heater underneath there. If anybody knows me, I'm probably more strict than any of you guys ever will be, with, with the people up there. My philosophy is, if in doubt, kick 'em out, because I don't wanna be responsible for somebody getting hurt. But there's a subset, niche, whatever, for whatever, you know, people like living in them, and it's not very many, and it's not gonna affect the, affect the RV, I mean, the motel business, or the apartment business, because it's so few. Example, kind of an example, in the middle of December, we're gonna have people living in vehicles in Dickinson. They're actually commercial vehicles, they're, they're truck drivers. And some of those people live there year-round. They'll go home for a week, or every couple of months, and they're gonna, we go to Tiger Discount, they're gonna be living out there, in their, you know, truck. It's, is it ideal? No. So, my understanding, I'll end here, is, no, I got one more thing, but, is, my understanding from the meeting, they could, if they were winter-ready, stay all year. That was my understanding from the meeting. I, I know you two didn't see it that way, but that's, I think most of us understood it that way. Whatever you decide, I will, I will comply with, you know? Because I'm here for the long term. I'm not one of these one, "I'm taking my ball and going home, I'm not gonna sell it." Because I love Dickinson, I'm gonna stay Dickinson, I'm gonna promote Dickinson, and.
Ted, can I, can I ask a question?
Yes, please.
Okay. So the winter living, you said brought up the winter living or winter condition?
Right.
I think that's where I'm having a problem, is, is with travel trailers, they're saying you can't bring that travel trailer up to what you call a winter living condition.
You can some.
Pardon?
You can some.
You can some.
You can some.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
They'd have to be heat-taped and skirted.
Okay, I was looking for a solution. So isn't that a solution, is we have a travel trailer, like they're talking about?
Right.
Bring it up to winter condition, doesn't that solve the problem here?
I would, I would hope so, because I would love to.
I know there's expenses, it's gonna have to be expenses.
Some of them spend $2,000 to put skirting around them. You know, it's not that they're, they won't do it. Now, some of them probably do stupid things. I saw one guy, this was 20 years ago, he took, went to Runnings and got hay bales and put around it. I mean, it's like, "Really?" You know, I, if in doubt, you know, I said, "If you're," whatever. But, most of them will comply if we give them guidelines. And you know what's so nice? If you guys are on board, it makes our life so easier. So then it's not me making them do it, it's, "Oh, I'm sorry, if you're gonna stay here, you have to do this, that, and the other thing." And then it's, you know, they're upset with you guys instead of me.
See, here's, here's where I'm at. I was listening, and I thought Mr. Frederick did an excellent job explaining what happened in the committee meetings and so on, and when he left, everybody's under agreement, and we came here, and now we have an issue with travel trailers and, and 270 days, and then you're saying, bringing up the winter conditions, and I'm on the line here saying, "How do we make this here work?"
Right. They have to be skirted, they have to be heat-taped.
So that's a solution. I know it's gonna run some money, but.
Well, most, they're all willing to do that, because they.
The alternative isn't, the alternative is what we know it's gonna be. You know, so as far as I'm concerned, I, I think I have my answer.
Commissioner Snyder? Commissioner Snyder? Go ahead. Okay. I just would note to you that there is a sentence in the ordinance near the bottom under 04.050, that the licensee shall certify that any recreational vehicle present in the park or campground between the months of December through February shall be all-weather rated. So the intent was that if there is going to be recreational vehicle there, that they just be rated for whatever the appropriate weather is, and so.
Okay, well, North Dakota, it's.
Could be, could be full, so during those months, it would just be, that they be all-weather rated, but that also ran concurrently with the 270, so as the example Commissioner Frederick gave, that if they arrive in January, the 270 would start then, but they sure can stay as long as they're rated appropriately.
The issue is, is...
Thank you.
They want 365 or longer. Do we want campers to be considered permanent residences? They're saying they're not, but when they're staying here for two to three years, is that not a permanent residence then? And that's where the 270 came in. Mike Fisher's the one that said, "That's the construction season." We were at 180 originally. Mike Fisher said, "Well, let's at least make a 270, because that's the summer construction season, March to whenever." So that's how 270 came into, and that was at the first meeting, we talked about that, and nothing changed after, we didn't discuss the 270 again after, that I recall, anyway.
But Mr. Fredericks, that was after, you basically laid down, "This is what we're gonna do," you know, and...
No, 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 Mr. Broughton, that's not exactly true. We were at 180, and we all came to the consensus that 180 is too short, and Mr. Fisher said, "Hey, what about 270, that at least covers the construction?" I was open to that, I didn't say, "No, I'm sticking to 180." If I was a closed mind, and as intimidating as you say I was...
Well, no, I wasn't saying that.
I would've said, "180 is what we're sticking to, and I'm not changing it."
I'm not saying that, sir. 180 just came out of the...
That's, no, there's a definition of permanent and temporary.
The meeting is temporary in the building code, a temporary structure.
Okay.
Is 180 days or less.
Right, right. At September 11th meeting, I think it was 364, you defined temporary, yes?
I defer to building...
Well, I understand. I made a copy of something, if you, can I, can I give this to you?
Sure.
That was actually written by a guy that owns a utility supply group, which provides RV and mobile home supplies, you know, electric pedestals and all that kinda stuff. And actually, if you remember, it's December 6, 2011, Mr. Snyder, do you remember this meeting where they were gonna limit it to 14 days for campgrounds?
Of 2011?
Yeah.
I can't even tell you what I did last week, Ted. Cut the 14-days limit first reading, okay.
And so this, this is not the first time this has been brought up, and at that time, there was probably, 100 people came to the meeting, and Mayor Johnson said, "You know what? We will live with it, without it, I guess." And the last September 11th meeting, there was probably 30 people that would've testified, and it wasn't owners, it was people who are living, you know, people who are paying rent, and it's adults, you know, not teenagers, adults, that you're limiting their choice. Now, you have that freedom to do that. And will we be cutting edge? I don't think so, but, oh, we might be cutting edge, but I don't think it'd be a positive image for Dickinson. In New York City, they decided that people overweight shouldn't be drinking so much pop, and so they, cutting edge, they put a 20-ounce weight limit on pop, you know, how is this different? So, that's all I'll say. And once again, whatever you decide, I'll abide by. I have one last thing, and it's a pet thing, and I saw that too, and I have the highest respect for the police chief, but feral cats aren't gonna have owners. And the people who value their pets and take care of their pets, they're not the problem, you know? In fact, most people I know have pets, they almost prefer their pets over their kids and some of them, and so I, that ordinance is really not gonna help the pet problem, that part of it. So I think, either way, it's, it's not gonna help the pet problem. I've probably talked too much, but thank you.
In the end, we did allow more than 14 days.
I guess we did.
We had the problem back then, is absolutely right.
Use as...
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, any other comments? Anyone else from the public? Broughton?
Okay, this is my last, last. At one of the meetings, do you remember me talking to you about the fellow, Mr. Fredericks, or Commissioner Fredericks, that came and spoke, and he basically was homeless, he came up here and he bought a camper?
I do, I remember.
And I said, "With guys like that, can we grandfather him in?"
It's the decision of this council, I mean...
You know, and we're grandfathering him, you know, his employee, you know, it would really be that not too many. And when they're gone, you know?
I mean, I just, I look at what you gave me here, right?
Yes, sir.
And you're using this as evidence, but it says right here, "In many areas of the country, Arizona, California, Texas, and Florida, people use their RVs as winter homes." That means they have a summer home that they go to. My parents used to live in an RV in the wintertime, and they came home in the summertime, so that means it's a temporary residence. This, this doesn't even support really what you're trying to say. We're trying to say that we should let people live in a camper 365 days a year and never leave, or up to as many years as they wanna stay.
As long as they're safe, yes. If they're not safe, no.
Mr. Frederick, who all participated in these meetings?
I believe everyone was, Mr. Schwinn would know more, but I think almost everyone was there, we had a sign-in sheet, so...
Yeah, everybody was there.
There was just one owner that was not there.
And he didn't show up for any meetings.
And Mr. Schwinn, what are the main concerns from building in codes in terms of these RVs as permanent?
You stated it right there, it's codes. Without rules and regulations, we have chaos.
Right, I understand.
I do that all the time, but we need minimum standards, and there's no way that you can take a RV and put it next to the building code, a stick-built structure, it doesn't work. There isn't that standard for a permanent structure. These are RVs, they're recreational vehicles. The standard is for that use, not a permanent residence.
But could you show us that code?
The International Building Code?
Yes, yeah, and show us where it says you can.
Ted, I can take it to my office and actually show you the stacks of books that I actually have. You're not gonna find the RV in the building code, a recreational vehicle in the building code.
So we're using a code that doesn't exist to exclude people?
Where's your foundation? Where's your footing foundation? Where's your structure? We just said that we're not even gonna mount them down to the ground. I mean, it's a, it's a movable product, you attach it to a vehicle, it's an RV.
If you're talking about the International Building Code, if you're not included, you're automatically excluded, okay?
Okay.
That'd be where he's coming from.
Okay, okay. I'm really, I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Broughton.
Mr. President, from my perspective, I think this is really difficult, 'cause I understand kind of both sides of the spectrum, and as someone who's just kinda thinking of humanity, I know there's people that can't afford other options, or for them, they see that as a one-time purchase and a minimal lot rent, which is compared to the costs that can be associated in apartments. You know, I would like to see if this is something that many communities are moving towards, because as you said, if we're the first rock kind, I don't know necessarily that that needs to be a regulation that we need to have. I'm just, to me, I don't know that it makes that much difference. I mean, people live on the streets, we can't require them to rent an apartment building. I mean, I know that's kind of a silly argument, but to me, I just, I don't know that this is a huge battle for me.
Ms. Trustam, I'm okay with what you're saying, however, I think we need to adopt this as a living document, so that changes can be made to it, to address anything that might come up with what you're recommending.
Mayor Decker, Commissioners? Mayor Decker and Commissioners, there was reference made to an article concerning past discussions by the City Commission at a different time, I believe it was 2011, concerning a 14-day time limit. I don't get much opportunity to one-up Commissioner Snyder, and in this case, my memory is in fact better than his, so I wanna take that opportunity. That discussion at that time, I can tell you, was directly and clearly related to man camps and discussions the City Commission was having at that time to prevent the indiscriminate creation of man camps within city limits.
And that's stated in that article, so you didn't one-up me yet.
Ah, I'll keep trying, thank you.
Mr. Schwinn, can you answer that question?
Actually, if we were going to allow RVs, we'd have to create a standard, a minimum standard, for us to enforce the codes that are on the books. There is no minimum standard for a recreation vehicle as a permanent dwelling. There just isn't anything out there for us. Our codes don't allow you to live in a treehouse in the city of Dickinson. We actually sent notice to a property owner who built the treehouse during the boom, so that somebody could occupy it. And neighbors called us, and we notified them that they could not do that. There's no standard for that. If we are going to allow permanent residency for RVs, I guess we'd have to create that standard.
The ordinance, as it sits right now, just by me reading it, and I may be wrong, would not preclude anyone from basically picking up their trailer and moving it, they're there for 270 days and move it to another trailer park and restart the 270, am I correct?
Correct.
What was the point? I mean, from a, you know, thinking of it, what's the point of having an ordinance that reads like that when they can take the same structure that they're in and move it to another spot, location? That completely defeats the purpose of the...
Our laws are for parking also, we have 48 parking, you can move your vehicle six inches.
I think, I think we do need to look at this a little bit more, and...
I'm hoping, I was just going on what they agreed to, so...
And I think that's pressuring as well, I think in a committee, you have to be open and you have to let those opinions out, and I hate that, you know, to hear that people are coming forward with things that they felt like they couldn't get off their chest, 'cause that's the purpose of those, so we can get those things hashed out prior to these meetings.
And to the one point with the pet record, I will agree with Mr. Broughton, I think the people that truly care about their pets probably cherish them more than they do their own children sometimes, but...
Mr. President?
Yes.
Ms. Murtha, if we approve this tonight...
We're not, we're not. This is just a public hearing.
If we approve it at the next meeting, the 270 days starts at that time?
No, the 270 days starts when they get licensed and whoever is currently residing there.
Typically, it'd probably be January 1, I would assume.
Okay, so, so if we approve it, next meeting or so on, January 1 would start the 270 days, that would give 270 days for us and the mobile home people, a chance to work through this here and change it, we'll have to leave it as is.
I did have a follow-up possible response to the question of, "Why 270? What's the point of moving it from one to another if that's all they're gonna do?" And for those who are in wonderful compliance, there's probably no point. However, I think one of the intents is to, what would be the appropriate word, is to discourage those who aren't in compliance from continuing to exacerbate an unsafe condition. And what I'm referring to is not things I've personally observed, but probably Mr. Schwinn has observed, where travel trailers are set up and converted into permanent structures by adding on additional heat sources.
Correct, I'd agree.
And adding on other accoutrements to the structure that make them unsafe places. And so when you, you don't have that limitation, it encourages that unsafe activity, which is a concern for both the building and for the apartment.
But that goes against the code?
It does go against the code, again, it's discouraging.
But, I mean, it would with the new language, would it not?
I mean, having those additional things? It absolutely would, yeah.
And, I mean, we have the owners here as well, who know and have a clear understanding of what the requirements are now, so that liability, I mean, that needs to be, there needs to be some teeth to that.
I believe there is, with regards to license, getting a license issued and having it in place. But that would be one of the policy reasons behind enforcing or having something that says it's a temporary, is to actually treat them as temporary and not have those unauthorized type of heating switches and the like, which causes...
I, you know, one thing I think of, and, you know, forgive me, this is just a thought, I don't think that many people living in RVs choose to do so because they want to. I know there are people that do, but, I mean, I, like I said, that, for me, that's something hard to sit up here and pass judgment on what my idea of ideal living condition is, when that may be some people's only option. And so I just, for me, I don't know that increased regulation and, like you said, they can move the structure to the next RV park, I don't know if we're actually getting down to the purpose of the code and what we're trying to enforce here.
If it's, if it's an RV, and they bring it up the code for winter living, that could take it out of the 270-day...
I wanna make sure we, it's gotta be rated for winter living, not, "They bring it up the code."
Okay, rated.
Yeah, 'cause then we'll have people...
So if it's brought up to winter-rated?
There's a manufacturing stamp that says it's rated to zero, so...
Okay, could that be eliminated from the 270?
Well, and...
If we wanted, right?
Mr. Frederick, I would be willing to sit with you too, if it needs to go back.
I can sit in another committee, I mean, it seems to be this is the only issue that we're stuck on, but, I mean, I'm just supporting with staff.
And I support what they have to say as well.
I guess, I'll just have one more comment, and I think where we're going is, is another meeting, to hash this out.
I'm really not sure that another meeting is gonna hash it out unless we get staff to change their mind, so, I mean, staff is gonna have to come back and say, "We're gonna allow these winter-rated campers, we're okay with allowing winter-rated campers," and it'll be up to us to decide, so, I mean, either, or we don't support their suggestion and we just do it. I mean, I don't know that we need to meet again, because I think that, I don't know that we're gonna talk somebody into it one way or the other, I mean, I mean, if we had 15 issues, I would say, "Yes, we should probably meet again," but if we're just stuck on one issue, I mean, it's gonna be, this commission's either gonna say, "Yes, we're gonna allow that," or "No, we're not."
I guess my one comment that I'm going to make, my original intention by, with the past city administrator, myself, of taking over and taking ownership, I'll just say, of the licensing of our mobile home parks, was because of certain mobile home parks and the access that our first responders had to them. This has evolved into something way more than, this has evolved into RV campers and such. My primary concern was, when looking at these trailer parks, was the safety of the citizens living in them and the access by first responders. And I know we've gone into these, into depth on RV and pets and everything else, but the truth is, if you... And I know we've gone into these, into depth on RV and pets and everything else, but the truth is, if you can't get a fire truck into a trailer park and it burns down and it burns everybody's trailer park, you know, trailer home or mobile home down, that's why we're doing this. That was my original intention, because we did have an incident where it could have got a lot worse. And just to say the least, we lucked out, that only the one trailer was damaged. And I think we can come to a happy medium. If staff can, can figure out how they can enforce a code on these winter-rated trailers or RVs, I think we can come to some kind of, as a commission, of agreeing. But primarily, it needs to be for the safety of the people living in these facilities. So, I guess we'll have some meat.
One more quick comment I wanted to verify. We also talked about the winter-rated ones, and then we also talked about if they had a covered underbelly where you couldn't see the tanks, because not all of them are stamped, is there? Remember, we talked about that in the meeting? I just wanted to clarify that. That was a thing we brought up as long as they were covered on the underbelly where you could not see the tanks.
I think Mr. Shopper said that if...
We agreed on that.
If there were a factory...
Factory covering underneath the tanks.
I mean, not somebody just screwed some plywood on there.
If it came from the manufacturer.
So if you look underneath, you can't see the tanks and the lines, we were going to allow that, I believe.
I believe that was, I believe we agreed to that.
Because they're not all...
Because Mr. Shopper basically said that it would only be like that if it was rated.
Those who have that.
Yeah. You're right there, Rick, yep.
Anyone else from the public? Seeing no else from the public, we'll close the public hearing. This will be presented for a final reading the next meeting, and we will continue to have discussions between commissioners and staff.
Yeah, so, we have two weeks until the next meeting.
Mr. President, I want to thank Commissioner Frederick and staff for, he did what we want him to do.
He did.
Went out, met with people and wrote concerns and so on, so, thank you.
Do we want to direct staff to research campground's around the area?
Well, you know, the first one that comes to my mind is the one up in Wofford City that got blown apart, you know, with the tie-downs and the travel trailers and so on. Because I would imagine if any mobile home court was, and I don't want to even say this here, but if it wasn't in compliance, they would have all kinds of compliant issues there with mobile homes, modular homes, travel trailers, et cetera, et cetera. We might want to check with that.
Maybe it would just be...
And if Mr. Schwenk, if you can look if there are any standards anywhere that building and codes can enforce on an RV, any, if anybody's adopted any kind of ordinances.
Okay, I'll look in.
Okay. All right.
All right.
Anything else? I did ask already for the public, and I, so please refer your comments to Mr. Frederick. So I closed the public hearing, so we're going to move on to our 525 abatement hearing. Property owner, Mr. Carlos Royale, you have 20 minutes to present your arguments.
I'll try to hold it to 20 minutes or less. I've read through it, and so I'll just start in. You have books there, but it's basically right here, you'll notice it says Dickinson Assessment Poll. Here are my assessments. Here's the market value. The issue is, they're supposed to be the same according to code. Mayor and Commissioner, this is my third time to appear before you. I think we're making headway. We now know that you can correct one property value without correcting all other property values. We know that the standard for value for assessments is true and full value or market value. We know that the sales ratio study is not the same as spot checks. We know that the income approach to value and the comparable sales approach to value are the most relevant approaches to income property like mine. And that the cost approach is not applicable for 40-year-old income properties like my apartments. We know that the abatement hearing, that you are appointed to be impartial finders of the fact, and that there are only two questions. Was the property listed on the tax rolls as true and full value? And if not, what was the market value at that time? Because if it was not listed on the tax rolls as true and full value, it must be corrected to its market value. There is no exception to this rule when it comes to residential and commercial properties. Nothing else is relevant, not the amount of the refund, not if somebody else might come forward in the future. Only the property in question is relevant and what was its market value. The 30-sales rule does not apply, nor does the sales ratio study. At an abatement hearing, your actions are specifically, specifically prohibited from applying to any other property. Every property owner must file for and prove their own case to get a reduction at an abatement hearing. You are the impartial finders of the fact. That means you don't carry a bias of the city, the county, the schools, the assessor, or any other entity. You are, consider, you are to consider all the factors that may affect the property's value. As per state guidelines, comparable sales and appraisals are to be considered as evidence of value as well as income and expenses provided by the owner. With this in mind, I will show that these five properties are not and were not listed on the 2017 tax rolls at their true and full value or market value as required, but instead were listed at values above their true and full values. For residential and commercial property assessments, the true and full value is the same as market value as defined by the Century Code. You were talking about appraisals earlier, and you were talking about the expense of paying for them. Do you realize that I have provided you with 20 such appraisals for these properties? 20. And you're talking about concerned about buying one? Let's go to the next chart. Let's go to the next chart. These charts show, here's the red lines, they show the income of each property based in dollars. And you can see it comes down. This is the only one that kind of levels off. All the rest of them are just straight down. Those are all based on income. The chart next to them, which is the blue line and the red line, those charts show their values relative to 2014 and the percent change. Why 2014? Because our assessments and the owner's values were basically the same in 2014. Clearly, the declines in market value due to the declines in income are not... Let's see, I lost my place there. Clearly, the declines in market value due to the declines in income are not reflected in the assessments as shown by these charts. I shall also show that the properties were not assessed at market value in 2017 based on income capitalization, both actual and stabilized, independent third-party appraisals, and comparable sales. This is the same chart as what we're just looking at, except for it's on, all put on one chart. Notice, whoops, wrong button. Notice that incomes are down 77% to 113%, while assessments are down since 2014 only 2% to 21%. My college math professor taught me to ask, what is a reasonable answer before we start to solve the problem? Let's do that. Does anyone believe that Silvergate's actual market value is down only 2% in 20, since 2014? When Silvergate's income is down 76.91% since 2014? Or that Century's actual market value is down just 6% since 2014? When Century's actual market value is down 94.48% since 2014? Or that Park Place's value is down just 8.5% since 2014 when Park Place's income is down 113%? And when you cross the 100% line, it means it's losing money. Especially since the state has told us that the income and sales are the most relevant in determining the market value of these properties. We can clearly see the income is down dramatically, so clearly, value should be down dramatically also, and they are. As confirmed by market sales, which I have provided. There have been three comparable sales of properties like mine that have sold for around 40% of their assessed value since 2014. The assessor admitted right here in this room that his assessments were off by as much as 60% to sales as confirmed by these three comparable sales like mine that I have provided. Clearly, my properties are not listed on the tax rolls at their true market values, not even close. As proven by the declines in income, comparable sales, appraisals, and the assessor's own admission of being off by as much as 60% to actual sales. Just so I don't miss any, Eighth Avenue's income is down 91%, while its assessment is down just 12% since 2014. Royal Manor's income is down 79%, while its assessment is down 21% since 2014. The second question is if they're wrong, and they are, then what should they be? According to the State Board of Equalization, the sales and income approach are to be, are the most relevant approaches to consider, and that's what I have provided. According to the state tax guideline, a comparable sale is the best indicator of market value. But the owner can also use income and expenses plus appraisals as proof of value and should provide same. I have provided actual income and expenses, stabilized income and expenses, comparable sales, third-party independent appraisals by state-licensed appraisers. And they all, they all show that these properties are not and were not listed on the 2017 tax rolls at their true and full market value, but were over-assessed. Joe Ibock, which is who you're going to hire or try to hire for your negotiations, did the Century appraisal. He is the most noted, respected, and trusted MAI appraiser in North Dakota. If you look at his assessment of my property, Century, it's been over assessed $16.5 million since 2015. Here is a, remember when the assessor said that rents were $2,500? I actually looked up exactly what we were renting properties for on February 1, 2017, actual rents. Now, there's an error in your book, so I gave you an updated sheet. Century has 68 units, not 90. Look at these rents. Silvergate, $650, and the garages included. Century is $465, but if you want a garage, it's $50 extra. Those are the actual rents, and I used them to do a stabilized gross income, and you'll find that it's $699,600. I took off a 10% vacancy. I added back the laundry. You get an effective gross income. I'd use 45% to 50% expenses before taxes, and you get an NOI before taxes. I used what's called a loaded cap rate. That means I'm correcting for taxes, so I used 9.23. And I get a value for Century, for instance, of $3,558,613. If you normalize the taxes, they should be $43,717. That reduces the NOI to 284,689. And now if you use an 8% cap rate, you get $3,558,613, and that's expenses after taxes are 57%. I did that for every property. Did I use reasonable expenses? Well, if you look at, Century is 56% pre-boom, and I used 50%. So afterwards, it turns out to be 56.6 after-tax, right in line. All the other properties, I used 45% before-tax expenses, which works out to be 52%, which is exactly what the average is pre-boom for all of my properties since I've owned them in Dickinson. Did I use a reasonable capitalization rate? Well, if we go down here to this, here's the high, the low, the average, and the gray is what the assessor used in 2017. It's a fraction of what the market shows. Let's move on to GMI, Gross-Rent Multiplier. Again, these are, all comes from the assessor's numbers using his assessed value by actual gross income. Here is the high, the low, the average, and here's what the assessor used in 2017. And you can see that it's two to three times what the market shows. Let me summarize. The assessor's cap rates are a fraction of what market data shows to be the assessor's GMIs. There are two, they are two to three times his values have been in the past. Even the state only used 5.9 GMI for Century in 2018, or about half, the 10.61. You can see it up here, 10.61, that the assessor used to get to his market value. Now here is the actual income and expenses. The previous one was stabilized, and you'll notice that actual income was $912,822. So why is actual higher than stabilized? Because rents were going down, so with every new lease, the rent that you're collecting goes down. So if you stabilize it, it should actually be less, and that's what it was. And then we use, whoops, we use the actual expenses. We get 272. If we use an 8% cap rate. The reason I've used the actual numbers, remember, we're using 2016 for 2017 values, and in 2016, we had plenty of income. I mean, we weren't talking about imaginary numbers because we didn't need them. Every property produced reasonable net operating income. So you use an 8% cap rate, you get $3,404,000. The appraisal is $3,505,000. The comp sale bay is $3,606,000. They all confirmed the values. I took, and we don't have the appraisal for Mr. Greenley. His appraisal was dated August 15, not February 1, so I actually prorated them. I found that the difference was just immaterial, so I just used the appraisals as he wrote them. You can see that Park Place, if you prorate it, is 352, and his appraisal is 348, or it's basically $4,000 bucks. It just didn't make any difference.
Mr. Royale, Mr. Royale, on that...
Yes?
Was there not an appraisal done by Mr. Greenley on Century?
Yes, there was. The reason I didn't put it up there is we have a later appraisal by Mr. Ibock.
You have what Mr. Greenley appraised it at?
Yes, $4,800,000, I think it was $4,800,000.
It's a pretty big difference.
Huh?
It's a big difference for Mr. Ibock.
Yes, and the reason is, is very simple. When Mr. Greenley did his appraisal, he assumed the market was turning around, and you know what? It didn't. If you remember, I said it wasn't going to, and it didn't.
So there's assumptions built into these appraisals?
Yeah, they're just assumptions built into the appraisal.
Into all appraisals?
All appraisals, absolutely. So we have an appraisal that's later, and we have all the information to actually look at. One is a projection forward, the other one is looking back at actual numbers. So you have those appraisals? So you have those appraisals. I submitted all of them to you. So you have Mr. Greenly's appraisal, and I submitted the full appraisals on every one of these properties, including Mr. Ibock's. Did you get that? And there may be a chart here that actually shows Mr. Greenly. We'll see if it shows up. Here's the comparable sales. Now, this is 4.23 cents. You'll notice it sold for 45.57% of assessed value. It is absolutely identical to Park Place, and it sold for $360,000. According to the state, that is the best indicator of value, and it sold just two months prior to the set value date of February 1st, 2017, because it sold in December of 2016. So it's the absolute best. It's a recent sale, so that that should be the controlling value. Now, the assessor said, they were, I mean, not the assessor, the appraiser said values were going down, and he came up with 348. So he's off by $12,000. You can pick either one of those. I'm good with both numbers. You'll see there's another one here at 4498. And then, to show you that those numbers are confirmed even later, now, that's everything prior to 2017. The highest sale was $30,000 per unit. The average was $27,419. And then later, in 2018, we have a sale that sold for $28,689 that just confirms that that's where the market is. Here's that actual sale at $28,000, or it takes a 57.42% to correct that to market value. The rest of these, I'm going to go through them really fast because I'm basically through with my presentation. I'm just going to point some things out. This is the assessed value. This is the cap rate, and that's the appraisal. Park Place, there's a picture of it. And I just, I'm just showing you this so you can see the appraisal, the full appraisal has been submitted. This is just a quick summary, and you'll see that the value there is $3,480,000.
$348,000.
Yeah, $348,000. Thank you. And then we go to the next, this is just the same thing. It just shows you the value, the assessed value, the gross income. It just, those are going to get repeated in here, so we're going to cut those out. This is, again, it's just showing you Park Place, and that's the one we're talking about. Sold for 45.57, it's identical. Here's Century. Here is the assessed value. Here's the cap rate value and the appraisal. And there's Century, you get a picture. Again, it's just the value pages. One thing I want to point out, because this kind of gets missed, and everybody kind of forgets it, the appraisal was 3.5 million, but for assessment, if you look right down here, it's $3,400,000, because for assessment, you take out what? Personal property. So I only asked for 3.5 million, but if you really got technical, the number should be 3.4 million. And there was their signatures. And again, here's Century with the actual numbers, and you'll see that basically, all the values confirm each other. If you use 8%, actual numbers are 274, and I think when I stabilized it, it was like 294, it's really close. It's almost the same number. And so all these numbers are right around that 3.5 million. There's Silvergate. You'll notice that all these charts are basically the same, so I'm just going to skip through them unless you have some question about them. Basically, Silvergate is three fourplexes on dirt lots. In other words, as you can see it right here, that's not even paid. So.
This is basically everything. You have a wrap-up slide? You want to?
Yep, that's where I'm going to go.
You've got about a minute, minute and a half, so.
Yep, and that's where I'm headed. I'm just going, flipping through. You can see they're all basically the same, and we get down to, oh, let me just point out one thing. This is 8th Avenue East. The assessor did an inspection. After three years, he finally went out there and looked at it, and he came back and said it was $794,800. All right? That's only $34,000, or within 4% of what the appraiser appraised it at. And the reason he did that is because if you look at the siding here, that all needs to be replaced, the garages need to be redone, and it has to do with condition. Okay, let's just go on. We get down, here's our summary. Here's the appraisals. There's the market value, the amount over-assessed. Notice that the correction is different than the amount over-assessed. A correction can never be more than 100%, but the over-assessed can be 1,000%. So for instance, Century is over-assessed 150%, but it only takes 60.05% to correct it. First question is, were they not at market value? And it's clearly they were not. Number two, what do you correct them to? You have to correct them to market value according to code. I believe that the appraisals, the third-party independent, gives us the closest value to market value, and I've listed those, and I ask that you correct them to that. And here's the same chart. Do you have any questions? I'm finished. How close did we get to 20 minutes?
Very close. A little over. So any questions for Mr. Royal? Questions?
Any questions?
I think we've had a.
We've had lots of discussions.
A lot of emails, a lot of, a lot of data over the last couple of months.
Yeah, well, here's what, here's what you have received from me. You have received 20 opinions of values, all by licensed North Dakota appraisers. You have received actual income and expenses. You have received stabilized income and expenses. These are all the things that are required. If I'm to show you that they're not at, the assessed value is wrong, I believe I've done that, and I believe you are required to correct. And then you get to decide what that number is.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Royal?
Mr. Royal, 8% cap rate, is that going to be your average?
Huh?
Yeah. 140%.
Oh, okay.
There is a question, Mr. Royal. Actually, there's a couple, I think.
Oh, okay.
So.
Is your, your 8% cap rate, is that the average right now throughout the industry?
No, in fact, I'm glad you asked that. The cap rate. If you go look at 2017, I actually looked at every appraisal submitted to the state, okay? Not mine. I didn't submit any.
Well, I mean, if your cap rate on a fourplex, you're saying 8%. If I go to another fourplex owner in town, is he going to be at a cap rate of 8%? Or is he going to be lower or higher?
Oh, no, there's a general market. Yeah. It, there are, most of the time, cap rates are just out there in the marketplace, and they're pretty standard. In fact, I gave you, Coldwell Banker Real Estate Commercial stated their, in their analysis, submitted to the state, that the published capitalization rates were 8.69 to 14.37. That was for them. I looked at every appraisal, there were six, that were submitted to the state for appeal in 2017, so that we're talking apples and apples. Five of the six were 11.5% cap rates. One was at 8%. I use 8% because it's the most conservative, give you the highest value, and we try to reach an agreement. I want to be conservative and give you a value that's reasonable, and there should be no question to it. It's just like 4.23 cents, it's identical, same builder, same size, everything to Park Place. There should, I don't even know why we're talking about it. In fact, Carson Steiner there started to correct it back when I first came here, if you remember, and unfortunately, the assessor said you can't correct it unless you correct them all. And so it was basically the, it was shut down, and so my properties were not corrected. So here I am back, as Jason said, let's get them right so we don't have to keep going through this every year. All we've got to do is get the market value one time, and here's the other thing. You don't have to worry about 2015 and 16 because we're past November 1st. Those are gone. So you don't have to worry about anybody else coming in.
Mr. Royal, can I ask some more questions?
Yes.
I'm looking at the summary, the summary here.
I think that summary, though, is from Joe.
Yeah, okay, from Joe. But it shows the assessed value and it shows the owner's request.
No, that was his.
And basically, I'm looking at Eastmore, well, I'm looking at all of them. And before I get into this here, I want to thank you because I do not sleep from 1:00 AM till 5:00 AM, but you have given me a lot of things to read in that time, so I want to thank you for that. So what, I'm trying to get a summary out of this here, and you were talking about the $30,000 assessed value per unit?
That's actual sales price per unit.
Sales price per unit.
Absolutely.
Okay. So it looks like to me, in a roundabout way, you're using $30,000 for each unit. And I mean, eliminate all the income and everything else, the rule of thumb, I think you're using about $30,000 per unit. Is that correct?
Well, I used.
I mean, you show, you're showing me all the figures and all that there.
Yeah.
So in my mind, it's an awful lot of work that you went through, and I'm seeing the $30,000 per unit, which your request, now, so the question in my mind is, is the $30,000 the correct number?
Absolutely. In fact, not only is it correct, it is, it is the market, it is the sales. If you go look at the sales, here, let's just back them up. Because these are the actual sales in 2017, actually, 2016 of December, which is where we're talking about. Here we go, right there. All right? These are the actual, true, fair market sales. These properties that sold, they were advertised, they were putting the multiple, they had multiple offers on them, they were negotiated, and these are the highest prices that were obtained for these properties. And you'll notice that the price is $30,000, $30,000. One was $24,000 due to condition. And then there's another sale down here, and notice it's also $30,330. Now, that's it. We're talking about 2016 for 2017 assessed values, and the value date is February 1st, These sales are December, they say December 30th, 2016. I mean, they're right, they're within two months. And then you say, well, maybe those were too low. So what happened to the market afterward? Not only are they not too low, they weren't low enough. You'll notice that the next sale was at $28,689 for properties like mine. And this is, again, is a fair market sale.
Mr. President, so Mr. Royal, would you say that price per unit is continuing to go down?
Yes.
Okay, so when you went before the State Board of Higher Ed, or excuse me, State Board of Equalization, I'm looking at their values, I only see one that's comparable to what you're suggesting up there.
That's true.
Okay, why is that?
Very simple. Their staff can't add. I sent them a letter, okay? And let me just give you the example, okay? They took, and they made several mistakes. If we were to pull up their letter, I could show it to you.
I'm looking at it right now.
Oh, are you?
Ms. Trust, what was that amount?
So I'm looking, I'm looking at the results of the 2018 state appeal hearing where his values were reduced, some were, some were actually increased. But price per unit, only one was around that $30,000 range, and that was Eastwood. Other than that, they range anywhere from 51, 42, 38, 29, 40, 37, and that's in 2018.
Right, that's in 2018.
Correct. And now, we're talking about 2017.
Right.
Did you appeal this to the state board?
Yes, I did.
And what were the results?
Of what you're looking at.
No, 2017 values.
Oh, no, no, I didn't.
Okay, why did you not?
The reason is because I missed the hearing.
Okay.
Because I wasn't, just to put it bluntly, if you remember the hearing, I came in here for appeal, abatement of 2015 and 16, but we were talking about 2017 at the same time. And I was given a date, which skipped a county hearing. And then I found out, if you don't go to the city, you have to go to the city, you have to go to the county, and then you can go to the state. I missed the county hearing for 2017. I made it for 2015 and 16 for the abatement, but not, not for the hearing that was in between, and I just didn't get the right date, and I missed it. So, but let me answer your question. If you look at Century, for instance, they use a 20% vacancy factor when they stabilize the income, and then they did an add-back of $88,000. But they don't tell you where they got $88,000.
Well, Mr. Royal, I think it's going to be very difficult to follow, and this is 2018, so technically, it shouldn't be considered in 2017.
Yeah. And basically, what they did is they sent me a letter and said, if you want to correct the error, you have to do it, I'll be back with you guys. They told me I have to come back through the abatement, it's too late, when I pointed out that they made some mistakes. They multiplied 5.9 times a number, you've got 5.2 million, okay? And, but if you actually multiply 5.9 times their gross income stabilized, you get 4.2 million. I pointed that out to them, but since they didn't share it with me in advance, I had to look at it afterwards and send them the note, and they said, Mr. Royal, it's too late, you'll just have to correct that error through the abatement process. Okay? And they, they also took and figured a 20% vacancy factor, and then they added two numbers, 40,840,000, and they got 88,000.
Okay, Mr.
It's over $8,000.
Mr. Royal.
They just made some mistakes.
Okay, it's very difficult for us to follow those numbers, especially because, you know, we're taking your word.
But I'll tell you what, when I come back next year, I will have those numbers written out, and you'll be able to see.
Mr. President, I would like to hear what Mr. Hirsch felt.
Yes, if there's no more questions for Mr. Royal, I will let Mr. Hirschfeld rebut. So, seeing no more questions, thank you, Mr. Royal.
All right, Mr. President, Commissioners, thank you very much. Just want to remind everybody that the assessing office reports values, we don't set the values. I know some people think that we have a dartboard or a bag, we pull numbers out of. That's not true. We take our information from the sales that actually occur in the market. I mean, theoretically, or, let's start back. Values are one leg of a three-legged stool for taxes. I mean, this is what everything's about, is taxes. So you have your property values, you have your mill levy, and the, oh, I should have remembered all three of these.
What sale?
I'm sorry?
Sales? Property, mills, sales?
And budget, to get your final taxes. And so, I mean, theoretically, we could cut, cut these values in half, double the mills, have the same taxes, and we wouldn't even have to worry about what property values are because everybody'd be well below. But we can't do that because of tolerances. You know, state requires us to be within certain tolerances. Before you, I have three different documents. I have my presentation, which is bound, I have kind of a little guide of where I'll be going with my discussion, and then, of course, the assessed values and the abated values, so we can kind of follow as we get to that point. Mr. Royal said he sent us lots of information. I won't refute that. This binder here constitutes 597 pages from 163 emails. 2015, 16 abatements, 2017's information, and then, of course... 2015, 16 abatements, 2017's information, and then, of course, all the appraisals did make it to my office as well. So, you know, I've, I reviewed that, so no shortage of data. Always appreciate data. But in touching tolerances, I wanted to remind everybody, State Board of Equalization says we have to fall between 90 and 100%. They would kind of like us to be at the 100% level. That's what full, true and full value is, is 100% of market.
Mr. Hirschfeld, what happens if you don't stay within that range?
If you don't stay within that tolerance range, state statute, and it's here in 571304.1, says if it's over 100%, the State Board must decrease it below 100%. They cannot allow either residential, commercial, or ag land as individual property classifications to be above 100%. That being said, they also set a, a low end, and currently, that's 90%. The sheet that I have here is the minutes from the 2016 assessments. It refers to as, you know, the prior year, you know, that was the same. It's been the same for 17 and 18. I have the minutes from 2016 here simply because it's an open records request or something you don't see later in the month.
And so if you fall below the 90% tolerance, what happens?
If we fall below 90%, then the state will raise that property class up to 93%. So if we were to come in at 87%, all in, in commercial properties, say the residential's at 95, but commercial's at 87, they would raise everything up to 93%. That's how it's explained here in their tolerance levels. Now, I have seen them waive that in the instances where there's been a revaluation done by an outside company. And they've come in, they've kind of balanced everything out, revalued properties, and maybe a little bit on one side or the other, that 90 to 100. They have been known to let that ride, if you will, another year to see how that market plays out. That's the only time in the eight years, seven years that I've been doing this, that I've seen them fall outside of that 90 to 100% or the 95% that it was prior to, I think it's 13 or 14 when they changed that. This line here just simply shows all the different 2017 values for Century that Mr. Royal has presented me. As you can see, it ranges from, you know, in the 700,000 range up to 480,000. That would be the Cashman appraisal, and then Mr. Ibox appraisal's in that as well. Those, since those appraisals were submitted to me in an email form, I went ahead and included them. But that is quite a range for one property for one year. And so it just goes to show the wide variation of the information that's been provided to And then, if you've seen this before, we've had it once or twice, Mr. Royal doesn't buy into the statement that I made in the past where it all comes out in the wash. That meaning that because of the 30 sales that were acquired to use going back to three years, it, it slows down how quickly we can make adjustments. And so he points out that, and it's not easy to see here, but I do have, have it in front of you as well, that Mr. Greenlee's appraisal from Cashman, his estimate of value based off of income and Dakota Appraisals and Mr. Ibox's company, were all kind of in that, I want to say $10,500,000 range for, for 2015. And the assessed value was in excess of $12 million that year. And then that, they all agree that it decreased. The assessments have decreased too, but I'm assuming here that it's, we're not decreasing quick enough. If that's fair, Mr. Royal. Is that a fair assessment of that slide?
Yeah. And you asked about the, Mr. Greenlee's appraisal, and I said there was a slide. This is the slide. You'll notice that I show it here, which he's pointing out. It shows both the Mr. Greenlee's appraisal and Mr. Ibox's appraisal. So you're right. You know, it's.
My concern with this slide, though, however, is that Mr. Ibox's appraisal for 2015 was $10,500, Mr. Greenlee's for Cashman was 7.3, and the abatement from Mr. Royal that year was for $2.63 million, nowhere near the $10 million he says his income supported. Kind of curious if the income supported a $10 million value. Why were we going through that abatement process at 2.63? Spot checks. Mr. Royal's talked about spot checks. In fact, he's approached our legislation about changing the Century code in regards to spot checks. Going to be paraphrasing here a little bit, but if I remember correctly, it's if the appraisal falls outside of 10% variance from what the assessment rate is, we're to use that appraised value. However, we have two appraisals for Century apartments that aren't within 10% of each other. So, I mean, if I can be a little snarky, are we going to spot check your appraisers? They're just, the consistency's not here. I mean, we're not even going back three years. They're supposed to be using the same information, and they're off 30%, 18%, 38% from each other over the three years that this was done. And again, you.
Just one question.
Yes.
Those differences in values, could that constitute the timing when they were done?
It, it could, which is an even bigger.
What if one's at the beginning of the year and one's at the end of the year?
The time periods for 2017, I mean, you're going to have more information in May of 2018 when Dakota Appraisals did this.
What I'm saying is if in January 2017, you did an appraisal, you would use 2016's numbers. And if you did an appraisal December 31st of 2017, you would use all of 2017's numbers, which could affect the value, not?
Are you speaking for my assessed values or for?
No, appraisal value. The timing of the appraisals, could that not cause the difference?
It certainly does. And that's why we, you know, we recommend that we use a February 1 valuation date, considering sales from 2016 and up to three years prior. And so if you're using.
Well, that's where I'm, I'm just trying to get to the, I mean, we're using this as an example, but could the timing be the reason?
Absolutely. I mean.
Okay.
Mr. Royal, I'll give you, I'll give you five minutes to rebut.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not going to say anything. I'm just standing up.
Okay.
Okay, continue.
And looking at this chart here, I mean, I, I guess we're to assume that because in 2014, my values differed in a percentage from what the income was. I, I don't see the relevance of this slide. You're assuming that in 2014, everybody's value was exactly at the same point. And from that point on, we neglected to do that. But, you know, if I can borrow a phrase from one of my heroes, Paul Harvey, let's look at the rest of the story.
I just got a question. Mr. Royal, I got a question on that. So when you say 0% in 2014, you felt in 2014, your assessed value was exactly right on? Is that why it's at 0?
No. What I did is I took 2014, and so that you can see it on a chart, and the, and the difference was within 10%. My values were within 10% of the assessor's value. So I took the assessor's value, and I said, that's 0, right? And I said, my values are 0.
So you.
And then I took it, and I said, how much did these change? And how much did the assessment change?
Okay.
So, so his are based on his number, mine are based on my number. And so they're relative to that value, whatever it was in 2014, that's the change. So if you just look at it, Silvergate went down 2% when its income went down 80. And, and, and the value only went down 2%. Doesn't, doesn't make sense.
I understand, though. Thank you.
Yeah, okay.
But in 2 million, or in 2014, the true and full value of Century was 9,321,000, and then it went up to 12,000,000, 15, 10 million, came down 10 million in 16, and 2017, 8,706,000. So that's 10% from where it was, lower than where it was in 2014. But overall.
No, but I'm not, I'm not calling your.
From the high, about 40% down. So we, since 2015 to 2017, we, we've decreased the assessed value.
No, but you have to start at 2014.
Pardon?
We started at 2014. 2015's when everything went, went sideways. So we're, we're in agreement, basically, in 2014.
Yeah.
The difference is less than 10%, or it's right around 10.
And from 2014 till now.
Till now.
2014 dates to, 2014 numbers compared not to 15 or 16, but to 17.
Right.
Were down 10%.
Were down whatever that chart says.
Also with.
6%.
Also, also with the 40% over those other two years that were down. Because the high was in 2015.
This is relative, so that you keep it straight. If you take whatever the number was in 2014, okay, if we go to this chart, he's got the, can I borrow the clicker back?
Absolutely.
If we start with whatever the assessed value was on this date.
Okay.
We're now at 2017. And if we look at Century, which is, what's the color of this? Century.
Orange line or?
Orange line, right? Okay. Century compared to what it was in 2014, it is down only 6% difference. That's how much it's gone down.
From 2014 to using our number 2017, 6%.
Exactly.
Okay. So what's the bottom graph then? That shows you total income.
That's the income.
We see income, okay, net operating income, and we go to the same red line, and we see Century is down 94.45%. Now, let me, let me just clarify one other thing, because he showed a chart up there, and he showed all these different numbers for Century in the apartment. The reason for that was when I first presented and put in an application, I thought we used the same year of income for the assessments. And I came here and I asked and I changed it because those are different than taking and shifting it one year, which is what the assessor told me that you did. So the first time I gave you numbers, they're, they're not shifted. And so you get these, you get these lower values, okay? Because I was using a number that's over here, and the assessor's using the number that's back here. And, and let me show you how big that difference is. Century went from making $274,000 to $60,311 in one year. So if you did a cap rate on that 60,000, you get a million dollar bag.
I'd like, I'd like my question to Mr.
Yeah. So, so I just wanted to point that out, that the reason he has these graphs all over the place is because I submitted some numbers that weren't the way that he, he does them. I changed all the numbers to match the assessor's approach to the assessment. Here's my question. If you have all the numbers in advance, we are using 2016 for 2017 values. We know those numbers in advance. There is no reason for those assessments to be wrong. They're wrong because he started with the number that's wrong, and then he used paint fade to try to adjust for market value. Can't do it. It does not work.
Mr. President, I like that.
The state has told us, given us the guideline, that income is the approach to use, and that's what I have done, and that's what I've presented to you.
Okay. We're going to let Mr. Hirschfeld.
Yeah, here you go, Joe.
And.
I have a question for Mr. Hirschfeld.
And, and Mr. Steiner has a question for Mr. Hirschfeld.
Mr. Hirschfeld, it seems like 99% of the information from Mr. Royal is, is based on income. We aren't, the state doesn't require that all information used to attain the full and true value based on income. Is that correct?
That, that is correct. It doesn't mean that I can't consider it, it's just.
Because back in 2014, rents were pretty inflated. You know, if you ask anybody that's rented.
Right.
They would say that rents were outrageous, a lot of them left because of it. You know, so, you know, trying to use what the rents were and what they are now and so on, and your income, I can see why you're using it. Okay? And then he does some, he does have some sales, okay? And then he does have cost per unit of 30,000. We've seen the state at 50,000. In, in my searching, I'm finding that even the 50,000 is light, 60 or 70 is what, per I'm having a problem basing a decision on income. Because I don't know if we can compare income of an apartment buildings to income of another commercial building with a business in it, based on how that cost, or that commercial, or that building owner, business is doing. If he's, if his sales are down 50%, is he, does he come in and ask for reduction in, in his appraised value because his business is down? You know, I don't know if we can use that correlation to an apartment building. I don't know how much we owe it to an apartment building, even though it does reflect a sales price.
Let me, let me clarify that for you. The state has given you the guidelines. Do you have that letter? If you pull it up, it tells you that income and sales are the most relevant to use for these properties. I'd also point out that if you allow the state to correct, when you're at an abatement hearing, and yet you're at an appeal hearing, these rules that Joe is bound by, and I understand that his, things that he has to do, they do not apply. And the state proves it in the fact that they reduced Century 35%. And the overall for all properties was 27% in 2018.
So would you be happy?
They did not go look at the sales ratio. They did not go look at, at this, that they have to be within 100%. Any of those, because you know what? The code says they do not apply when I'm at an abatement hearing.
So you'd be happy if this went, got to the state again?
At this point, right now, you guys' job is to determine one thing. What was the market value of these five apartments on February 1st, 2017? And the state has told us that income is the most relevant, and sales are the most relevant. They, they basically tell you, and every appraisal that was submitted, every single one said.
Mr. Royal, I mean, you're, to me, you're just bringing up the same information that you've sent to me in countless emails, that you've stood in front of me for three years now. You're, you're restating the exact same thing. I would, all I would ask for is let Mr. Hirschfeld finish here.
I agree. I'll sit up.
Mr. President, Commissioners, thank you. Getting back to the slides here, as I was saying, the, the rest of the story, if we could dim the lights, please. I went back to 2011, so we could capture the entire cycle. Again, going back to my, my statement of how it comes out in the wash, if you will. The, and you have it in the packet there. It shows the numbers that are there, shows my work. I don't have it up here on the, on the screen. The income came from Mr. Royal's book here that he provided to us earlier. And the gross income multiplier that I use was an 8GIM. That came from Dakota Appraisals, appraisal of the CityWalk apartments. And so none of those are my numbers. I didn't fudge any numbers. I have market data from Joe Ibox, and I have Mr. Royal's own income from his own presentation. And so if we go back to 2011, based off of the income in an 8GIM, we had an $8 million valuation, we had a $4 million assessment. And as you see, his rents, and it can continue to increase into the boom, as we all know what happened. And then it peaked, and then it's dropped off. And nobody's contesting that. That's what Mr. Royal is here today. And in fact, he's saying, huh, we're over assessed. Well, you know what? At this moment, we are over assessed. But I want to, I want to say, we go back three years, and we've done that for each and every one of these, these years from 2011 through 2018. And what comes out in the wash is, Mr. Royal's been net under assessed $23 million on Century apartments since 2011. Not over assessed, under assessed. But, you know, if you don't like Joe Ibox's 8 gross income multiplier, we'll skip ahead. But you know, if you don't like Joe Ibach's 8 gross income multiplier, we'll skip ahead, and we'll use his 6.5 gross income multiplier that came out of Mr. Royal's own Century Apartments appraisal. And we see the same thing. We still lag what the actual market was. We meet here for a couple of years at 15 and 16, and then we show a spread there on the other side of the down cycle. I mean, when we're using information that's a year, two, three years old, we have no...there's nothing else we can do but lag the market going down. Physically, with the laws that I have, I can't get there. And you know, as we look at the net over/under, we're still net under assessed $6.5 million. And that's over the entire boom/bust cycle here. And just to point out again here, these are 2017 values. These aren't 15 and 16. These are for the year 2017 alone, going back from emails from 2017 up into this here current month. And so the statement that, well, you know, rearranging the income to meet the year, you know, being aged information that I have to use, it shouldn't mean we're more consistent on the back end, not less consistent. That's all the slides I have to show for you. I do have...if we want to get into the appraisals of the property, I had some concerns with the data. When I viewed the data, I didn't change it. I just looked at it and analyzed it differently. If you want to get into that, if you're ready to stop at this point, if you made your decision, we can certainly take a break, and I'll hear from you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Steiner.
I've seen enough, heard enough, read enough to make a decision. I don't know if any of the other commissioners need anything.
Any other questions from other commissioners? Comments?
Do I get a short rebuttal?
Very short one.
Very short.
Because you used up some of your minutes before.
No problem. I'll make it short and quick. First of all, he talks about an 8% cap rate. Not a cap rate, yet. Was it cap rate or GIM?
GIM.
Can we go back to my slide? Gross income multiplier. The historical GIM for Century prior to 2015, the high was 5.52, based on the assessor's number.
How come so low?
The average for all those years was 4.42, okay? Not 8.
How come so low?
I'll tell you what I did, okay? I took the assessed value, right, and divided it by the gross multiple, I mean, by the gross, actual gross income, and I just charted them out the entire time. So these properties, the average is 4.42, historical average for Century. There it is, right there, for 15 years. And all of a sudden, the assessor wants to tell you that he can use 8, and it shows that I'm, what, under assessed? But those weren't the numbers that he used or that fit the data from 2003, when I bought the property, all the way to 2015. Just not facts, okay? If...I'm telling you, you got to use the real numbers. I'm more than happy to send you the chart. It shows the gross income and the assessed value, and that number, and that number will be 4.42, and you'll see it, 3.87, 2.8. Some of these get really kind of ridiculously low, because I didn't own them low enough, and that's when the market was all screwed up, okay? But we're Century, we have 15 years of history. We know what the assessed value was. We know what the gross income was. Nobody questions that. And you just take and divide them, and you get this set of numbers, and the high, the high was 5.52, right there it is, okay? So that is, I just want you to know that if you're going to take a gross multiplier of 8, yeah, it's going to look like I'm, what, under assessed? But if you go use the real numbers, 4.42, and if you just go to Joe Ibach's, I sent you guys the graph. All it does is shows the assessed value. It shows Joe Ibach's appraisal for 2015, 2016, 2017, 2018, and the difference is I've been over assessed 16 and 1/2 million bucks. I don't know how you dispute that. You can talk about all these other imaginary numbers of gross rent multipliers and all of that, but we have the most noted appraiser in North Dakota, and he says, and he starts out in 2015, only off 2 million bucks, which is Joe put up there with that chart. The other thing is Joe tries to indicate that the state will not correct anything more than this, like, 10%. That stuff's not true. They corrected Century 35%, and they didn't get it right. It should have been more. But the overall correction for all those properties was 27% for 2018, okay? And when I show you those sales, those are actual sales, Carson, and the next sale in 2018 confirms all these other sales at $28,000 per year.
Can I go back to income again?
Sure.
And I'm trying to make a correlation or silver gate.
Which one do you want?
Let's look at Silvergate, just on the rent income.
What, actual?
End unit, this year, what's the rent? Monthly rent.
Oh, Silvergate?
Yeah.
This year? I sent you the one, I don't have it here, for 10 months.
Maybe Mr. Bauer knows. Is it $1,000 a month, $1,200?
What, rent?
Currently, I'm asking 850 per end unit.
For end, 850? In 2014, what was it? Do you know?
2014.
Oh, yeah, I'll tell you.
Maybe 1600.
16?
I guess.
So you went from 16 down to 8?
Yeah, 850.
Yeah, but what was it earlier in the year? That's now.
Right, I'm talking today's date, yeah.
Yeah, today's date. What was it earlier in the year?
Earlier in the year, 7, 7 and 1/4.
Yeah, 700.
And I'll tell you why I'm using this. I'm using a lot of that in correlation to all your other properties, because I sold you Silvergate.
Yes.
Yeah, those are mine. So I see where you're going with all this, and I don't begrudge a man making money at all, you know, but I just, I see the percentages now, so.
Yeah, I mean, all you got to do is look at it, and it's half or less. So you know that they ought to be down by 50%.
Thank you.
I mean, that's pretty simple. Okay. The other thing is, let me point out something, because the assessor just said it, and he said the most critical thing for this hearing. He said, yes, if you look at them, we are over assessed. That's all you got to know. If they're over assessed, the code is specific. It says if it's over assessed, it has to be. It must be. You have to correct it to its market value, and they define that as true and full value or market value, as defined by an arms length sale. And with that, I close.
That's kind of leaving my comments out of context, though. Because you're talking about assessed value to market value, which are two different things.
No, they're not.
They are.
They are not. Absolutely not. Your evaluation of them may be...
Okay, gentlemen, gentlemen.
But, no, no, wait a minute, wait a minute.
No, Mr. Royal? This is it.
Yeah, okay.
This is it. We're going to make a decision.
Right, okay.
That's it.
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Any questions? Comments?
I want to thank Mr. Royal for coming in, because anybody else that comes in after this here, you're the base for what they got to give us for information.
They have to prove...
So the first thing we're going to tell them is to pull our files and watch our meetings and get all the information, so thank you. You're doing your homework, no problem. Okay, Mr. President.
Yes.
I think we need to move the needle here. I think we're close on our assessed values on all of them except Century. I do think we're high there. I think we're high by a total of 120 units, maybe a million and 5 or so. I'm trying to use your income, I'm trying to use your assessed values, I'm trying to use your sales per unit numbers and so on, and if this goes on, if you're unhappy here, you go to the county, you go down to the state. I hear the state's using 50. We use 50 on our numbers with those ones that I said, I think we look good. We come out pretty close. We use 50,000 on Century, which I think the total number is high because it's a larger piece of property, you know, et cetera, et cetera. You know, so my feelings are that, you know, if I would ask Mr. Hirschfeld to negotiate another number, it would be in the Century units.
Well, I think we need to make a decision tonight. We make the decision, there's no negotiated. We're going to make a decision, and in our...
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
I'd like to hear what the other commissioners have to say, and if they don't, I can make a motion and...
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any comments, suggestions to what Mr. Steiner just said?
I mean, I guess I've been on record before saying I don't feel that the values are correct, and I think the 2018 appeal to the state proved my point.
You think all the values are correct?
I mean, we have comparable sales, we have appraisals. What more information do we garner? And then we have a state...
I want to get the...
Then we have a state decision that made a change. So when I look at that, what are we supposed to base our decision off when that's the information that we have?
I just want to be clarified.
The state didn't reduce all of them.
No, they didn't.
And so I don't think that they're all wrong. I don't think we...I think that's like...
No, I think that was Mr. Steiner's point, is the...most of the properties were spot on. He just thinks that Century's probably a little overvalued, so...
And I think if you go back to my comments, I think Century was the one I had the biggest problem with the last time we talked.
Okay.
So...
So to that, we'll address each property on an individual basis. If there's a commissioner that wishes to...I think you've been provided narrative within the abatement hearing. Am I correct, Mr. Hirschfeld? Do you have narrative in there? Commissioners can...I shall read this here. You have the ability to deny the request?
Correct.
You have the ability to move to accept the abatement request by the property owner, by parcel and change to, or you have, you can move to set your own value and property identified by parcel and change that value to some other amount. There are three options. So if there is a commissioner that would like to do one of the three, you...I would look for that motion.
If there's no other commissioner who wants to make a motion, you need more time?
No, I just want to look at a couple of things here.
I guess they're going to consult different charts here.
Well, let's...Mr. President, I think we should start with Century Apartments. If that's the one that we wanted to take a look at, I can just tell you, the assessor's assessment for 2018 was 7.8.
But the...
Royal's suggestion for value is 3.25, and the state came back in 2018 with 5.12.
So what we need to look at is the assessed value for 2017, which is 8.76.
Correct.
And that's what we're making the decision on tonight. So there's a motion from...again, we have three options, a move to deny the request, move to accept the abatement request from owner, or a move to change the value that we have identified per parcel, so...I know Mr. Steiner has...
Mr. President, I would move to deny request change in value for parcel number 11600110-010... Excuse me, I'll start at the top.
Okay.
Deny request to change the value of 001024001100 Park Place.
I would second that.
So we have a motion to deny on Park Place, parcel 0010-2400-1100. And we're second. Okay? Any further discussion, comments? Motion to deny, and we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. The next item.
Mr. President, I move to deny request for change in value on parcel 00500810000.
We have a motion to deny on 0050-0810-000, Champion Oil, 8th Avenue East, 23 units.
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion or comments? Go ahead and vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries to deny.
Mr. President, I move to deny change in value on parcel number 112002000500, Windmore Financial, Royal Manor, 24 units.
We have a motion to deny on 1120-0200-0500. Any further discussion or questions? Go ahead and vote. Mrs. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries to deny. We have 12 units at Eastmore is the next.
If you also want to have some fun, or should I continue?
Mr. President, I would move to deny the request for abatement for 0050-0302-000.
We have a motion to deny on 0050-0302-000, Eastmore Financial, Silvergate.
Is that...so we have to do each one separate?
Yes.
Or is that all one building? Okay.
The motion denied with a second. Any further discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries on Eastmore, 0050-0302-000. We have two more parcels of property there.
Mr. President, I move to deny value, parcel 050003000000.
We have a motion to deny on 0500-0303-000.
Do we have to do those as well?
Well, they're separate, they're separate parcels. Any further discussion? Motion to deny with a second. No further discussion, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries to deny. Last piece, the last parcel on Eastmore is 0500-0304-000.
Mr. President, I would move to deny the request for 0500-0304-000.
A motion to deny on 0500-0304-000. We have a motion to deny on 0500-0304-0000. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion to deny. Last piece of property is the Century Brookdale Financial, 120 units. This consists of 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. We can do these individually or we can go ahead, since we did it individually before, if we're going to do them individually, we do all of them or we can have a motion.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I plan on making a motion based on the total value and it can be worked back to a percentage for each property. But I think the bottom line is we'll know.
Okay.
What my intention is.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. President, I move to change the value of property identified as contiguous properties 11600-1000-0101 down through 0108 for a total value of $7,560,000.
So Mr. Steiner has made a motion to reduce the value from 8.76, 8,760,000 to 7,560,000 on the Brookdale Financial Century Apartments, 120 units.
Second.
We have a.
I have some questions, just really.
No, sir. They'll have to wait.
If the math is wrong?
Mr. Steiner has made.
Yep, yep. Basically, what I'm doing is 120,000, I'm using 10,000 per unit as.
50,000 per unit?
Yes.
Okay.
Actually, a little more than 50,000 per unit, okay? But less than what it comes out to be. And so what I like is that we're talking about a 1.2 million reduction in property value, assessed value, I should say, to be applied of that percentage to each of these parcels.
I just thought you said 50,000 per unit.
No.
Nope, nope, nope.
You're doing it a different way.
Yeah, different. It's not 50, it's a little more.
I understand.
So we have a motion on the table to reduce the value of Brookdale Financial Century, 120 units, from 8,760,000 to 7,560,000. With a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And that is it for the abatement hearing. So we will move, we have one last Commission item. We have an executive session for the Konek claim update.
I make a motion to move into executive session?
We have a motion to move into executive session for attorney consultation under NDCC 40-04-19.1 and 44-04-19.2.
Second.
With a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. We move to executive.
Thank you. We're back into the public session and I, just for the record, would indicate that Commissioners provided guidance on how to proceed in this matter and thank you and I have nothing further.
On that, we have exhausted our agenda and we are, I guess I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
We adjourn.